Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Sato.
Here.
Etac.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Wensler.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we have a full quorum. Next item is item two. Items to be removed, added, or changed, I know of none. Does anybody have anything? Nothing? Okay. Item three matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody from the public have anything they wish to address us? Okay. Item four, consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, that is ordinance seventeen dash fifty-eight, authorizing execution of a quick claim deed for property behind 225 South Harrison Street. Memo came from Scott Buning. Anybody have any comments or questions on this? Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried to recommend the city council ordinance seventeen dash fifty-eight. That can go on consent agenda also. And then we'll go on now to item number five, which is the interview process for the candidate for the vacancy of Ward Fort Alderman. Normally, the mayor induces this, but I don't see him in here. He's just walked out, I think. So I'll go ahead and introduce it. As in the past many of times, whenever there's a vacancy for an Alderman, the mayor puts the call out for people that may be interested to write a letter of interest and address it to him at the mayor's office. And then we hold this process here where those that are interested get up and talk about themselves and why they may be interested in filling this position. And then the Alderman can ask the questions that they feel is all they may want to ask. And then after that process, then we'll adjourn into executive session, which will go into the back room there, and we'll simply vote on the candidate that we think would probably most likely fit the position the best. The higher number would be the person that be selected, and we'll go from there. Mayor, now that you just got back in here, do you have any more comments on this one?
You've got to be on time.
Well, first, I apologize to the candidates and then to the council for being a couple of minutes late. The reason I'm late is that in my CMAP world, I was in Chicago all day today. In the afternoon, we had to spend with eighteen visiting mayors from China. And so we had quite a little time with them. And it's an interesting story to go through with those folks, because obviously, nobody speaks either each other's language. So you speak about two sentences with them, and then you've got to stop. They had a graduate student from the University of Chicago with them who spoke to the two dialects of Chinese. So he was the interpreter, because he could speak English. But it takes a long time to get things done. And the most interesting comment they made was, well, they made a couple of interesting ones. They've been touring the Chicago area for three days, and they found that they were fascinated when they got into the suburbs to see all the cars that people had parked in their driveways. And they couldn't believe that all these suburbs around Chicago had three to five cars parked in their driveways. They just were dumbfounded by that. The other comment they made was is that Chicago and the suburbs are a beautiful place, but there's parts of it that really look terrible. They're words. And that either the property is beautifully maintained, or it's not maintained at all, and that really sticks out. So they were, those were the observations that we kind of gleaned from them, among other comments that they made. That's my report about this afternoon. First of all, you've already explained how we do this voting.
I have.
So we've been through this a number of times over the years. Several people have been originally appointed to the city council via this means, including Alderman Brown.
Twenty-two years ago.
Twenty-two years ago. So we've been using this method for a long time. And the way it's done is the Aldermen sitting here are the ones that make the decision as to who is going to be selected. And I feel very good about that, because when, you know, you get selected to be here, you're going to be working with these people, and you're virtually one of their very own, because they've chosen you, whomever it is going to be. So obviously, we have four candidates tonight, and we're only going to be able to pick one. I'm very impressed and pleased in reading the resumes of everybody, the high quality of the candidate that we have here. So let me just say that we have other positions, the things that are available in the city as time goes on. And we're going to have a meeting, probably the first part of November, in which we're going to invite interested citizens to come down here and hear about various city commissions and committees and things that we've got going. So we're going to try to bring some new viewpoints and some new people into the city government workings and some of the committees we got. Sometimes, that's the first step to somebody getting elected to the city council. So hopefully, maybe the day will come, and we'll have all four of you doing something with the city. So appreciate you coming down. So I guess normally, we try to do this so that, I guess we've arranged everybody on the ballot here by alphabet. So I guess the first person we'd like to ask to come up and talk to us for three to five minutes, tell us about yourself and your views in the city, and that's, I apologize for my mispronunciations of names here. Joe Knopf? Knopf? How is it said? How is it pronounced?
Right, the second time.
Knopf?
Silent K, it's Knopf.
Knopf, okay. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you for letting me be here today. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody. My name's Joe Knopf. I was born in a small town just outside of Dayton, Ohio, back in a couple decades ago. I grew up in that small town, and one of the things my wife and I liked when we got married, when we were in the Illinois, northern Illinois area, was that we both grew up in But that's one of those things where you make a decision, half the people like it, a small town. We both grew up in a place that had a downtown. half the people don't. We both grew up where it wasn't overcrowded, where neighbors looked after each other, where You've made the decision based on the facts, based on the rules, you move along. you had sidewalks, where people were out, kids were out playing. The game keeps going. The nice thing about that is you get an opportunity to work with kids. And that's what we found in Batavia. For ten years, I worked with Batavia Youth Football as the assigner for officials for I came here in 1996. their seventh grade tackle program. I've had three kids grow up here. Two of them graduated from Batavia High School. Every game needs officials. When I first started working with Mike Papella, they put two officials on each football game. My youngest graduated last year, was a member of the Batavia Marching Band. I'm proud to say this year, he's a member of the Hawkeye Marching Band. If you ever watch an NFL game, they have seven officials. Go Hawks! That's been a lot of fun. Twenty-two players on the field at seventh grade, twenty-two players on the field in My current position, I work for a company called Freudenberg NOK Sealing Technologies. the NFL. And we're worried about safety of youth. We make seals and gaskets. I got Mike to do what a lot of high schools are doing with their freshman programs, and I just celebrated my twenty-sixth anniversary. I've been in Batavia for twenty-one years. that's bring a third official onboard. I've been with this company for twenty-six years. I also worked with the Fox Valley Officials Association, and through that organization, When I make my mind up on something, I don't leave. It's been a lot of fun. I was able to bring young, new, interested officials to some of those seventh grade One of the things you have to do as a sales engineer is convince customers why a position, games, let them learn what it's like to be on the field, and get yelled at by parents, one way or another, is the right way to go. We do that with our technical expertise on our products. and help explain rules to coaches, and teach kids the right way to play football. I let the sales guy worry about haggling over the price. I worry about the technical details. Keeping your head to the side, keeping your head up, making it a safe sport. I take the input of all the data that's available, make a determination which one of our products We look at ourselves as the stewards of the game. If we don't make changes at the high school level and make safety a priority, the game best suits their needs, and propose that solution. of football's going to go away. I think the same thing runs true in just about anything you do, and that's probably Again, we have our set of rules, we make our decisions, we go with them. my engineering training. You bring in the facts, you leave out opinions, you make a decision. I've also been involved as a Cub Scout leader, and most recently, at the district level. Your decision's always based on facts. Over the last fifteen years, I've been a certified football official with the IHSA. For a long time, I've been with PAC 112, which is out of Louise White School here in Batavia. They're chartered by the Batavia VFW. That's another one of those areas where you make a decision and you stick to it. That's working with boys first grade through fifth grade, and now, most recently, they've When you're wrong, a good official admits when he's wrong. included kindergarten boys. You correct the mistake, and you move on. That age of boys is fun to work with, because their eyes are wide open, they want to learn. They look at you, and they're in awe of everything you do. The biggest challenge to Cub Scouts is getting adults to volunteer. So while we're making it, having fun with a purpose for the boys, we've got to be able to recruit adults to keep the program going. And that's what my focus was on for a number of years, was finding the right adults, making sure they came in with the enthusiasm that I had for the program, and stuck around for a while. I've had a couple of dads and even one grandfather come to me and say, "Best decision I ever made. Thanks for handing me a book and telling me, 'Just follow it, it's easy.'" I'm looking forward to being able to serve in the future. I'll be back in November for some of those other things you talked about. Feel free to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Why don't we run through all four of the candidates, and then we can ask some questions of everybody? I should have probably clarified that.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like us to move some tables up to the front for the candidates to sit in front of you?
It's your pleasure.
Why don't we, should we do that?
Yeah, maybe, let's let him speak, and then...
They move fast.
I don't know if we got it...
Well, why don't we go ahead and have everyone come up and...
Stand at the podium, yeah. Jerry Lamont?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. I made some notes, because I'm new. My name's Jerry Lamont. I've been in, me and my family have been in Batavia for a little over a year now. We really like it here, like the small-town feel. My wife is Amy. I have five kids. Three older ones are out of the house already. Morgan is a freshman at Batavia High School, and Mackenzie's a seventh grader at Rotello. They really enjoy it. They came from a small, private school that had five hundred kids total, from kindergarten to eighth grade. I was sure it was going to be a culture shock, and they weren't going to adjust very well, but they adjusted exceptionally. And they love all the activities that are available, and all the activities and sports that weren't available at the small school that are available now. So they really enjoy Batavia. My oldest son was in the Marines. He went to Afghanistan. He works for Union Pacific Railroad now. He's got a house out in Denver, Colorado. My other middle, or my middle son, he's twenty-five. He's in Oceanside, California. My daughter, Lindsay, is twenty-three, and she's in Highland, Indiana. Let's see. I was involved with my, I grew up in the south suburbs and spent most of my life down there. I grew up in Cal City, and I lived in Lansing for twenty-five years. Like I said, we moved here a little over a year ago, and we like it. Small, blue car, everybody looks out for each other kind of town. And it's still, with the nice downtown and all the activities, the fest, it's really fun being here. You guys do a great job at that, so thank you. One of my jobs, I was information technology director for the Village of Lansing for three years, and we had board meetings every Tuesday night, and all of the directors had to show up every Tuesday, so I'm used to being here on Tuesdays. And I also, since I was behind the scenes, I understand how cities and villages work and all the working goes behind it, and I also understand how much time you guys put in. It's not just showing up on Tuesdays. There's a lot of extra work and effort and debating and stuff that goes on, and I know all the little workings around it, because I was involved with the village. That's one of the things I think I can offer with this job, is I have the knowledge of behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on, and I also have a fresh and different perspective coming from the south suburbs here. And then everything here is new to me, so it's, I can offer like a new perspective that you guys might not see, because you're used to it all the time. I was involved in Cub Scouts and coaching. I've coached like every sport except for hockey, I think. With five kids, you get involved in everything. I was on the board of directors for Little League and Babe Ruth. I actually managed the Babe Ruth team. We went downstate three years in a row, so it was quite an exciting experience. And that's it, I guess. I guess we'll save the questions for later on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Malley?
My name's Tony Malley. I've lived in Batavia for the last fourteen years. Grew up in Winfield. I'm the fourteenth of fifteen children, so I'm used to large communities. I have nine brothers and five sisters. After I graduated West Chicago High School, I went to work for several of my brothers. I framed houses with six brothers, quite a few in Batavia, as a matter of fact, Geneva, St. Charles, all around the area. Saved up some money, then went away to Illinois State, where I got a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. While I was there, I got the opportunity to travel with one of my political science professors to London to study British political philosophy. While I was there, I got to travel around Europe, and really found that interesting to go to new places. So I, when I graduated, I decided to join the Peace Corps, and went to Ghana, West Africa, where I was a volunteer with a community of about five thousand people, no running water, no electricity, extreme poverty, and no toilets, pretty much. Big water and sanitation problems. And that was, my job was to organize them and help them improve their situation. And I'm very proud of the work that I did there. You know, it was the best decision I ever made in my life. I, you know, certainly helped some other people, but I helped myself a whole lot. I learned tons about myself and grew tremendously, and met the love of my life there. My wife, Muna, is from Norway. She was a volunteer in Ghana, working in a hospital, and we met on the beach there, and I literally, so I literally went to the equator to meet a girl from the Arctic Circle, because my wife's whole family is still over in Norway. They have a farm on the fjord in the Arctic Circle, and we just spent a good portion of the summer out there, over there. So, once I returned, finished the Peace Corps, and came back here, I decided I wanted to teach, because I was doing a lot of teaching in Ghana, whether it be construction techniques, I did age education program. And so I went back to work for my brothers while attending school at Roosevelt, where I earned a master's in education leadership. And I backed into a job at Batavia Public Schools. I thought I was going to teach government, and it turned out, there was a position open at the middle school at the last minute to teach woodshop, and my experience of teaching construction in Ghana, and having, you know, started in carpentry with my brothers at a quite young age, that was my qualification to get into it. And lo and behold, the next year, I was asked to go out to the high school, from the middle school, to teach in the building trades program, which I did that for nine years before Paige MacLeod retired. And when he retired, I took over the job, on the job, and built two houses, one over on Bernadette and one on Latham here, with students. And probably one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. And in fact, I still have a lot of my students', former students', numbers on my phone, and I get calls from them quite often about, they're putting a window in, or, you know, "How do I hang this door?", or, you know, advice like that. And I've met some tremendous kids, and I've been nothing but always impressed with the kids of Batavia. As a teacher, I started in ninety-eight, and I could see how good the schools were in Batavia firsthand. So my wife and I, we lived in West Chicago at the time. We were about to have our third child, and so we decided to move to Batavia so our kids would go to school here. And our oldest is a senior, or no, not a senior, he's a sophomore at the University of Alabama, studying aerospace engineering. Batavia Schools prepared him very well. In fact, he's joined by seven recent graduates this year at Alabama, because they're giving money away, so it was kind of a no-brainer, he was going there. So, and I also have a daughter that's a senior, and so we're still on the, doing the college hunt thing, and an eighth-grade daughter. While I was teaching, I was, for the last nine years of my career, my seventeen-year career at Batavia Schools, I was the president of the Batavia Education Association, and worked very collaboratively to build relationships with administration and the Board of Education. Worked very closely with Ron Lake, and I'm very proud of the work that we accomplished together. We made, we truly made Batavia a destination district for not only professional educators, but for families. And I don't think, I've never heard a bad word said about the education system in Batavia, and I highly recommend it. In 2015, you know, the building trades program was put on hold, and I was back teaching woodshop at the middle school, and so I started to explore other opportunities. You know, you can only build so many cutting boards and foot stools with seventh graders. So I looked to the IEA, the Illinois Education Association, the state affiliate of the NEA, the State Teachers Union, and did an internship there, and got a job with them. And I was stationed down in the south suburbs, down in, out of the Matson office, for a year and a half, where I got a huge education and an even greater appreciation for how good the schools in Batavia were. But most recently, a year, almost a year and a half ago, I was able to secure the position in Kane County here, and I represent the teachers and the support staff for St. Charles, Cane Land, and Burlington. So I'm back in Kane County, where I'm very familiar with the politics, because there are some different politics in the south suburbs, if you haven't been down there. So you can see my experience throughout life. I've really been involved, I'm really in the relational business. It's about building relationships with people to get stuff done. And I think that's what I would bring to the table here, is being able to build relationships with my neighbors and other fellow community here in Batavia to make sure that the community that we have here continues to be an excellent place to raise a family. You know, you're, I full-heartedly believe and support the values, vision, and mission statements of the city of Batavia. In fact, the thing that catches right, the very first words, "We value diversity", rang a bell with me when I read that. And I think that's something that we should be proud of, and we should always continue, you know, protect that. So, before I ramble on too long here, I greatly appreciate your time here and the opportunity, and I hope you consider me for the fourth ward Alderman position. Thank you very much.
And Mary Tiredani? Was that close enough, or am I...
Sorry, it's Tiredani.
Tired, Tarian?
Tiredani.
Tiredani.
Yes. I know it's very long. Hi, I'm Mary Tiredani. Thank you very much for considering me for fourth ward Alderman. So my husband and I were rather nomadic in our youth when we were receiving education, so we both grew up in Wisconsin, and that's where we met. And I got a teaching degree there, and I worked for a year in the town that I grew up in. And then he wanted to go back for his second degree, so we moved to Arizona. And there was a job shortage there when we first moved there, so I worked for a construction company as their office manager. I learned a lot about debt, how to work within a budget. I decreased the debt of that current company by half while I was there. I did all their taxes. I was in charge of the staffing and such for that company. Eight months in, they moved back to their parent company in Southern California, and they wanted me to come with them, but my husband was still in school, so... But then luckily, I found a wonderful job working with an upward bound program, which I absolutely loved. They do low-income, first-generation college students, and it's kind of a, help them come along the side counseling position. So we, we worked with kids in the Navajo Reservation. We worked with kids all over the southern, or southwestern part of the country. We held workshops for FAFSA, for study skills. We helped students choose universities that were right for them, fill out forms, any sort of thing the parents need. We got to know the parents as well, and I really enjoyed that position. Then when my husband graduated, he came and we moved here. He now works at Fermilab, and he's been there for ten years, and he loves it there. We love being part of the Fermilab community. It's a fabulous place. And we also moved here with a newborn, so I now have three children. And we bought our house, our very first house, in Batavia here, six years ago, almost seven, next month it'll be seven. Just a little house, and we've been working on fixing it up, and it's been so much fun. And we love our street, and our community, and our people. And every day, I'm out at Louise White Playground with my kids and talking to the other moms, and we talk about all the things that are important to Batavia. We talk about Kimpana, we talk about the boarded-up house on the corner that all our kids have to walk past every day. We talk about sidewalks, we talk about, you know, all the activities that are going on in the community. We talk about the things that we're going to take our kids to on the weekends, and the activities they're involved in in the evenings. And, you know, there came a time, I've been standing in that playground for five years, and I decided, you know what? It's time to just stop standing here and talking about it, and I really want to become part of this community, so I have a say in what happens in Batavia, where my children are growing up, the only place that they've ever known as home, and also where all of the other moms who've really become my family here in Batavia. Because my family lives far away, so it's nice to have our Batavia family. And so we can, I want to be here to represent all of them as well in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So maybe if I could have the four candidates grab a chair and just come on up to the table? So I'm going to begin with, I don't know if it's much of a question, as it is a statement, and I just would be interested to get your reaction to this. My compadre here to the left has an annual tradition that he does, and that is, is that by state law, we have to publish a year in advance the dates of all of our meetings. And so Alderman Brown, one of the things he does is that, once that list gets handed to him, he sits down and counts the number of meetings that we, the city council, have and that we can go to. We don't have to necessarily go to all of them, but we start out, we have two regular city council meetings every month on the first and third Mondays. And then, four or five years ago now, we used to have separate city council committees that handled public safety and community development and utilities and city services. So now we meet as what they call the Committee of the Whole. So that means every Alderman serves on every committee, or at least he's sitting, he or she is sitting there hearing what is being said and decided for all the things in the committee. So we find that it serves the city council well, because everybody gets to hear everything that's being said. But because we have that meeting, that generally, the last couple of years with all the stuff that's going on, it generally means almost every Tuesday night, probably most months, it's four Tuesdays, that you are all, whoever's chosen would probably be expected to come. Then beyond that, we have a couple of other committees that get a lot of attention, although we're not the members we many times want to go. One is the Plan Commission, and they meet the first and third Wednesdays of the month. And then another one is the Historic Preservation Commission, and they meet the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And then beyond that, you know, there's certain things that come up that, various meetings that you may get asked to come, you may be asked to do something on a Saturday morning or a Sunday afternoon. So the Alderman's job has no timeframe set with it. You are, you know, always there, but as Alderman Brown, I think, counted it up this year, if you as an Alderman decided to come to everything that we were doing, the hundred and sixty-five...
I think it was a hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five meetings that you could go to. You're not necessarily, the ones you're most expected to be at are the city council and the Committee of the Holes, because those are the two where, the Committee of the Whole is where you really get into the fine detail and the nitty-gritty of what's going on, and you kind of make a preliminary recommendation, and then we bring it to the city council meeting, and you have a final vote on it, and in the interim, you can ask more questions or drive by it, or do some, some various issues. So I guess what I wanted to just ask each and every one of you, you understand the time commitment is here, and you do get paid for coming to the city council meetings, but that's the only thing you get paid for. So you get a small paycheck every month for the two, meet two city council meetings, but the rest of this, you're doing it because of your love and your interest in Batavia. I guess that's the best way I can describe the payment plan on that. And then another one is the Historic Preservation Commission, and they meet the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And then beyond that, you know, there's certain things that come up that, various meetings that you may get asked to come, you may be asked to do something on a Saturday morning or a Sunday afternoon. So the Alderman's job has no timeframe set with it, you are, you know, always there, but as Alderman Brown, I think, counted it up this year, if we, if you as an Alderman decided to come to everything that we were doing, the hundred and sixty-five...
I think it was a hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five meetings that you could go to. You're not necessarily, the ones you're most expected to be at are the City Council and the Committee of the Holes, because those are the two where, the Committee of the Whole is where the, you really get into the fine detail and the nitty-gritty of what's going on, and you kind of make a preliminary recommendation, and then we bring it to the City Council meeting, and you have a final vote on it, and in the interim, you can ask more questions or drive by it or do some, some various issues. So I guess what I wanted to just ask each and every one of you, you understand the time commitment is here, and you do get paid for coming to the City Council meetings, but that's the only thing you get paid for. So you get a small paycheck every month for the two, meet two City Council meetings, but the rest of this, you're doing it because of your love and your interest in Batavia. I guess that's the best way I can describe the payment plan on that. So I guess I would, Mary, I'll put you on the spot first. Do you understand the require, you have any reaction to that, or...
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm excited to get involved more. Currently, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I have lots of time, and my husband's super supportive of this. He's actually as excited as I am about this potential to be involved.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm well aware, having worked with school boards a lot, I know that, you know, the commitment they have is not as much as the City Council is. However, I'm well aware of the amount of meetings. I'm at a time in my life, as our kids are leaving us, that my, I start to get, I will be able to make more of my own decisions now, and not the children deciding where you're going to get your money. So, yes, I think I'm familiar with what it's going to take.
And Joe?
That shouldn't be an issue. I know as a football official, the high school football season lasts about twelve weeks, and the other forty weeks of the year, my wife looks at me and says, "Don't you have a game to go?" So, open schedule.
Jerry?
Well, when I was the information director, I had to show up Tuesdays, and I didn't get a super check, so if I get money for it, that's all.
Well, when you serve on a school board, as I'm sure Tony knows, you, you don't get paid anything under Illinois law. And I've had Aldermen tell me over the years that the pay that they get here, they maybe can take their wife or their spouse out for dinner a couple of times a month, but that's about what it pays for. It's, you know, it's, it's a poverty-level salary if you were going to live off it. I'll tell you that. Okay, turn it over to the rest of the City Council. Who wants to ask some questions?
That's the first question. I think this is a great turnout, number one, and I'd like to applaud each of you. The first question I come up with is, what do you think is the number-one issue concerning Ward Four?
Why don't we, let's start at the other end here. Jerry, why don't you start?
Number-one issue going on right now, I'd have to say that to be companion, are the discussions going on around there. If you look at Facebook posts, the signs going out, I think it's number-one issue. What, I know it's definitely discussed, it's around everyone. Now, I don't think it's just a Ward Four issue, I think it's a whole Batavia issue.
Joe?
You know, I hear a lot about Campana, I hear a lot about One Washington Place, but I'm more concerned, not just for Fourth Ward, but the entire city, about the wastewater treatment facility. That's a project that's been ongoing and in the plan for quite some time. It's been kicked off. There's substantial debt to the city if things don't stay on track and it's not completed on time and on budget. Wastewater is kind of an important thing.
Yes, I know that from the history, let me tell you. I would agree that the obvious, the most visual issue out there with the signs being out of Campana, One Washington, obviously, that's going to be a change to, to our downtown people area, it's going to be iconic, I guess you could say, so that's going to be a big change coming, and then obviously wastewater. I, myself, I don't particularly come with any agenda. What the actual, you know, my neighbors in the Fourth Ward, that's part of the relational stuff that I would be doing, building those connections to see what really is their desires in this community.
Something that I've noticed in the Fourth Ward, especially in my neighborhood, is there is a lot of construction and house renovation going on, and that's kind of a big issue for not only the people that live in my community, but there's been a lot of construction. Crews come in, they buy up the old houses and they fix them up, it's wonderful, but then also it's pricing us, the Batavians, out of market. So that's something I've discussed with a lot of my neighbors who are trying to get a new house, because they have, you know, more children than they had when they were thin, or those types of things. So the real estate market, things like that, is something very...
May I just say, just for the sake of television, you could use the microphone. For all of you, next question.
Who's got the next question? Alderman McFadden.
Thanks. So, for all of you, you may or may not have been thinking of getting involved in politics or something somehow. When this position became open, what made you decide to say, "Yeah, I'm going to stick my name out," and I applaud you all for being willing to step forward in doing that? But I'd like to hear, what, what made you decide, "This is something I'm going to do right now"?
Tony, I'm trying to get everybody to do one, be, start first answer, so Tony's next in line.
Sure. Well, as I said earlier, my degree's in political science, and when I decided I wanted to teach, after having traveled a bit, I went back to school at Roosevelt and was working on a teaching, a secondary certificate. I wanted to teach government, local government. I think, you know, from my political science courses that I took, you know, that I found the most interest in local government, that is, the most government happens locally. The things that affect people the most happen locally, and, you know, I think one of my professors said that 1.8% of government is local. I think to have the greatest impact on preserving the high quality of community that we have, getting involved locally is, you know, what should happen. I've always thought that I would do so as I gained, got to this stage in my life, so this is, this opportunity came up, what a great time to get involved.
Joe, why don't you go next?
You know, growing up, my dad was a fire chief and my mom was the police and fire dispatcher in our town. I was on the department for eight years, and when your dad's a fire chief, you learn from him how to be apolitical. Keep your name out of the line, like, stay out of the decision-making process, you're affected by it, but you have to stay out of it at times. That worked because of the position he was in, but I've got an opportunity to have an impact, to get political, to be involved in the decisions that affect everybody, rather than just sitting back and letting the decisions have an effect on me. It also didn't hurt that I had a friend of mine who's on the school board call me and say, "Hey, Joe, I think you should do this." And we talked about it for a little while, and I said, "You know, I think you're right."
Jerry?
Well, I actually had been thinking about running for the Alderman in the 2018 election, so it was really weird. I talked to my family about it, and I, because I was in, I dealt with all the trustees before, and I couldn't be a trustee back then, because I was actually working for the village. And so we moved out here and talked about it. When we first moved out here, there's so much to learn, and we're still learning, obviously, but there's so much to learn and take in, and having that year residency requirement is a good, good requirement, because you just kind of feel like you're getting into it then. So it was weird, like I said, I was actually thinking about it, talking about running for the 2018 election, and then this opening showed up, so I was like, "Hey, here's a perfect opportunity. You can do it for two years. If I don't like it, I can get out. If I do like it, I can keep going." But I do plan this thing.
Mary?
As I said before, I really wanted to get involved because of all the moms in the playgrounds, and we talk about all the issues happening in Batavia for us, for our kids, just to be a voice in the community, instead of just talking about things that happen, to actually do something about it. That's why I just...
Okay, next question. Alderman?
So, making decisions as an Alderman is kind of a balancing act, between listening to the facts and then also listening to opinion and input from your constituents, whether it's your ward or the city itself, sometimes outside of the city. Given that, what, what is your process by which you, you will make your decisions on different topics?
Hey, Joe, you're, I guess you're up now for first answer.
Well, as I said earlier, as an engineer, I start with the facts. Weigh the pros and cons based on the facts, and then if there's no clear, one side of the fence or the other, based on hard facts, listen to the input, listen to other people's opinions, listen to what they want, and make sure that any decision made takes that into account.
Jerry, why don't you go next?
I guess the most important thing is, obviously, you have to listen to the facts, gather it, make sure you look at those facts known, just not one way or the other, but let the facts known, that you're consistent with. But then ultimately, they, not in this case, but normally, they elect you to represent them, so you have to look at what they say, of your own concerns and what you think is best, because you're representing a whole group of people, not just yourself.
Mary?
I'm making a decision, like all the moms in the playground, we tend to talk about things first, how we feel, how it affects us, how it affects our children, how it affects the city as a whole. Then I will, of course, as everyone else has said, look at the facts, look at what's going to happen, what are the outcomes, whatever possible outcomes, not just what you see on paper, but what could possibly happen in the future. That may not be apparent at the moment. I always think about the whole broad impact of what any decision could be, and then you have to make what you feel is the best decision.
Tony?
Yeah, obviously, facts matter, especially in this national political climate, sometimes you don't know what's fact and what's not, but the facts are very important, but as an Alderman, you are representing your constituency, so listening to them is important, but that's not, that's not enough. You need to listen and to truly understand them, so you can bring it to discussion here. And this council is a sounding board, you know, there's many years of experience here in this room to, that can help to form what's the best way forward that addresses what the issues of the citizens are.
And did we get everybody answered on that question? Okay. Alderman Shans?
I hate to split hairs here, but this is a really important question, and actually, I remember I was sitting in your spot back in 2010 for an appointment, and one of the Aldermen asked me a question, and it has stuck with me to today. It's a, it's a difference between going with what your gut is, because you're going to have access to a lot of information that your neighbors are not going to have access to. You're going to have all the facts in front of you, but then also, you're going to have emails coming at you every day, phone calls coming at 11:30 at night from a drunk person in Geneva that I got a couple of weeks ago. You need to weigh your gut versus representing your ward, and I heard all of you cover it, but I didn't hear you actually answer it. I had to answer this question back in 2010, I'm very curious. What is more important to you? Is it representing your neighbors or voting what is right in your heart?
Okay, Mary, you get to be the first answer now.
I think it depends on the issue that you're looking at. Some issues are easier than others to vote hard toward constituents. It really depends on the issue. I don't really have a better answer for that, because sometimes I'm going to go with the constituents, and sometimes I would go with my heart, based on what I feel would be better for me and my children, but there, it's a hard, it's a hard...
And the reason I ask is it's a yea or nay vote. So on this one, you're abstaining. Do you have a yea or nay?
Me?
Mm-hmm.
Of course, I would have a yea or a nay, depending, well, okay, so if you're asking for not, I guess I would end up probably going with what I feel is best for my family.
Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, and obviously, it's going to be very, with different issues, but I will say, from my experience in traveling in this world and my experience in the third world, you know, what's, what the desires of people are, sometime are always in their best interest, and I would have to say that I don't know if I would phrase it that way with what's in my heart, but what I knew was right, I think, is what has to ultimately lead us if we're going to be true leaders in a, in a community. Because it, I'm sure that's, there's, surely you have all dealt with difficult issues like that, where you knew what, you know, you're torn between that. It's not, it can't be easy, but I think going with what I believe to be the right thing, you can't go wrong by doing the right thing.
Joe?
I'd go with what was in my heart. If it's right in my mind and I feel right about the decision, then it's up to me to let people know and be able to communicate to people why I decided that way. We may end up agreeing to disagree, but that's okay, too. It's being able to communicate the reason you made the decision you made that I think is important.
Jerry?
I, I'd have to agree with, I used to take a look at what's right for you and your family first, and then that kind of resonates out with everybody else in there. So I would have to go with what is right, so I would vote mostly on what I knew was right, and then I would get the information out there to why I voted. I wouldn't hide behind anything. I, obviously, there's some stuff you can't divulge either, but I would let them know the reasons why I voted, and I wouldn't hide behind anything.
All right. Alderman? Or Mr.?
So I'm sure Dan's 11:30 at night phone call was nothing but cordial and subtle and proper etiquette involved. With some of these conversations, there will be times where it's less than pleasant. There will be conversations from your neighbors, people that you know and have known for many years, that churn less than pleasant. How do you handle those conversations? How do you handle those times when you are on two very opposite ends of that decision?
Tony, we'll start with you.
I would go back to my, you know, I said I was from a large family, and don't always agree with that one, but I am extremely proud of my family in that there is no one that doesn't, none of my village's sisters that don't speak to each other, there's no one that can hold a grudge. In fact, my next older brother is a Republican Township Assessor, and I'm a Peace Corps Volunteer Union leader. You can't be on further ends, and there's certain things we're not allowed to talk about at Thanksgiving, but... My brother Mark, I love him dearly, and we have those discussions, and, you know, we, to this day, we do find things we do agree on, surprisingly, more often than not, but there's, there's certain things that, and we, you know, respect each other. I think if you always show respect, you might not, you can't make people have respect for you. You can behave in a way that would invite them to respect you, but respecting them is the only way you're going to get respect back, and I think, you know, having those discussions, communication is key, but I, I think, yeah, that my experience with a large family has taught me that, well, I, you know, I'm very proud of my, my parents who instilled that in all of us, that you will always treat people like you expect them to treat you.
Joe, you're up.
It's just like on a Friday night on the football field. I've got to make nice with a coach who's going to be in my ear for the next hour and a half about any thing and everything that five of us do on the field. The way we talk to a coach is the way you talk to anybody professionally, and the coach has a vested interest in who, in who wins that game, where I don't. So he's got a lot on his mind, and he's got a lot of emotion built up. Let that emotion come out, and don't respond with emotion. Listen to it, let the anger get out. Once the anger's diminished, someone is the time to go in with calm reasoning, what they call a reasoning voice, and to try to express either why something was done the way it was done, or to be able to reassure somebody that they're being hurt. Taking notes and following through, and again, communicating with the person that wants to see something done goes a long way to help confusing those situations.
Jerry?
Well, I've been in information technology for thirty years now, or over thirty years, so the only time I hear from somebody is when they have an issue. You know, it ever came, "Hey, my computer's working great." So I deal with it on a daily basis already. And you do have to have respect, and you have to have patience, and you have to let them get hurt, even though you know what's wrong with it already, you have to let them have their say, and then you fix it and take care of it. But I'm used to, I'm used to that every day.
Mary?
Obviously, you're not going to make everyone happy all the time, it's not possible, so the best thing... the best thing is just to, as everyone else has said, have respect, have patience, allow people to say what they need to say, and then approach them, you know, with whatever patience and kindness, kindness is all.
Alderman Stark?
I happen to be the other alderman in the fourth ward, if you don't know me. Most people don't know who their aldermen are, so it's always, I know Joe from Boy Scouts, but being an alderman in the fourth ward is kind of interesting, because the fourth ward is very quiet, you rarely hear from the people in the fourth ward, there's very few problems, it's, it's, it's an easy place to be part of, because it's very, it's quiet. However, there are always, and I've always said, it's, I don't just represent the fourth ward, I represent the entire community, because I'm one of 14 votes, and so while it may be happening in the second ward, I still have as much input as the Alderman Callahan does, and...
Oh, and Wolf.
Wolf. I was trying to think who is the alderman on this side, but, so we all really, we govern the entire town, however, you will find that there are a lot of special interest groups in town who are very passionate about one thing, and they tend to yell the loudest. So while the fourth ward, your constituents in the fourth ward may not say anything ever, you will hear from other people around town who are very passionate about things, so it's a balancing act between, you know, silence and, and the people who are yelling. So my question to you is, how would you, how would you handle that? Would you, you know, if all the other, the people in the, the second ward are all stirred up, you have a vote to make, how would you make that decision? You know, the people in the fourth ward could care less, people in the second ward are very passionate, how do you make that decision?
I think the first answer is that Joe, or Tony was last time, and so, Joe, you're up.
Then you have to put yourself in their shoes, put yourself in the position of the alderman for that ward, as somebody who lives there, and somebody who's looking out for the interests of everybody, take in the input that they have, try to understand what the issue is, get with the aldermen from that ward, to see and make sure that they understand what's going on, and to make sure that there's concerns, so that it's not just you they're coming to, that they have gone and spoken to other people, so that everybody knows what the issues are. Again, it's about communication.
Jerry?
I think communication is the key there, you have, you obviously represent the fourth ward, that's, out of everything, should be a little bit higher, but you have the whole city that you represent, and you're, like Susan said, you're 1/14th of the vote, so you have to look at the facts, look at your heart, look at what your constituents are saying, and look at the second ward, if it affects, if it's a decision that affects the second ward mostly, you have to kind of look at what they say too, and then base it off, off the board, be everybody's input, and see what you do.
Mary?
It's a decision, like all the rest of the decisions, you, I mean, obviously, people are passionate about a vote in any situation, whether it's your ward or another, so therefore, you have to make the same process and decision that you would in any other case, would you obviously go with your heart, or with what your constituents say, or as, you know, as you said about, the best thing for that other side of Batavia, that is your neighbors as well, that's the equal and normal.
Tony?
Yes, I completely understand what you're saying about the fourth ward, I don't find that hard to believe at all, in fact, when we were moving to Batavia, we specifically wanted to be at Louise White School, you know, having been teaching in this rural district, I, we valued Louise White because it was the most diverse school, the fourth ward is probably the most, is the most diverse ward in the, in the city, in fact, the oldest African-American neighborhood in Alkane County is in the fourth ward, and so, there's understanding that, that, you know, there's also more mobility, I think, in the fourth ward than many other, of the other six wards, so, you know, that's, building relationships there is, is some, is an effort that I would put forward, but specifically to answer your question, in dealing with something that's, you know, the citizens of the fourth ward might not be vocal about, or even if I, if through crying, you're not hearing stuff from them, you know, you have to advocate for, and as their representative, you know, support what would be best for them, even if you're not hearing from them, but also, you know, it's the community, the larger community, and what's the, the greatest good for the greatest number has got to be a, you know, a consideration always, and working with the aldermen from, from the wards that it does affect, and hearing what they have to say, and helping to communicate that back with, with the citizens of the fourth ward would be, you know, I would, I would try to go about it doing the business.
Alderman O'Brien?
One North Washington was a highly controversial subject in your ward, in the fourth ward. What are your feelings towards that, that project, pro or negative, and support that?
Jerry, you're first up.
Okay. First off, I don't wanna give like a yes or no answer, because that would be very flippant, to all the research and data that you had to go through, and all the time you guys spent on it, I appreciate it, with that, I'll give you my opinion, though. I think having that business district down there is a good idea, I can, I can see it looking like the rest of River Street there, and being very beautiful and pretty and everything like that, and I think that'll actually enhance downtown area, but personally, I love the first, maybe four stories, the second two, I, I, to be honest with you, I kind of think that building is a little bit too high for your area, but I think bringing other business down there and having it look nice is a, is a good idea.
Mary?
I'm, I think it's beautiful, and I hope that the development will bring more business into downtown Batavia, there's several vacant buildings that are in need of businesses, and there's plenty of Batavians looking to pay for them, so hoping it will help rejuvenate some of that vacancy.
Tony?
Yes, I have heard both sides to this, and, you know, from concerns about, oh, it's too tall, it's too, I would say, you know, I didn't really take a hard side one way or the other, but now that it's coming to fruition, I would say that I've been, my wife and I have talked countless times about how pleased we are with River Street and Houston Street, and how that's come out, and that's, this is the next step in that, and I think, you know, we'll see, that's, you know, obviously, it's gonna be less, more pleasing on the eye, I think would be a better word, is the way to say it, so I, I think it's a good thing for Batavia, but that's not to mitigate the, you know, the concerns that people had, you know, I think, when, when River Street was happening, you know, just the archery that we heard about, I think that's pretty accepted, and I think, you know, I quite liked it from the beginning, so I'm, I'm happy with the way this council has moved forward so far, and I say, keep doing it.
Joe?
You know, I had a 73 Monte Carlo, and I absolutely loved that car, some people don't like Monte Carlos, and didn't like the 73, and over the years, as I had that car, it became more and more burdensome to keep it running, the cost went up every year on it, and it got to the point where it was no longer worth having around, and I think a city is the same way, you can be nostalgic about parts of it, and love what you had, and wish that you could keep it, but if you don't, at some point move forward, you're sitting on the side of the road. I think One West Washington's gonna do a lot to revitalize the downtown, it's gonna offer some new residential area, where we haven't seen residential area, I think the height of the building might give a new look to the river, not necessarily a bad one. I think it's a good project, and I look forward to seeing it completed.
Alderman Callahan?
I wanna ask Tony about, this is about the size of your family, so are you ready for every week to be Thanksgiving? But, kind of more along the lines of what we've been talking about, a lot of, a lot of the, the larger projects that we have are controversial, because either people have one view or another, or aren't informed enough about a decision, but a lot of the projects that we have been doing all have an interconnectivity to it, because it's all laid out in what the vision plan and the comp plan is for the city. What is your vision for what Batavia is?
Batavia, my vision for Batavia is that it continues on the path, it is to be a family-friendly, great place to raise a family, inviting them, we, you know, when my 14 brothers and sisters come and visit, they, you know, they are always impressed about what Batavia has to offer, from, you know, River Street to the Water Street Studios, to community involvement, the River Walk, it was done by the community, that's continuing on that path, and I think, I'm not coming in to say that I know, you know, have solutions, or this is the way we should be going, I wanna continue to support the work that's being done, the efforts that have been done are producing results, and I think continuing on that long-term projection, and the planning that's been, been done for time, the long-term plans, I think continuing to stay in the course on that will lead us there to be, to continue to have Batavia be, you know, the general Fox Valley, I think is, you know, I've heard from, from any of my family members, that I just want to love this town when I come to it.
Joe?
As I said in the opening, my wife and I loved the downtown feel, the small-town feel that Batavia has without really being a small town, it's bigger than the town, I grew up in, and that's something that is the vision I would have for Batavia, is to say, stay the nice welcoming place, a safe place to raise kids, a great place to raise kids, a place that attracts people who want to get away from the hustle and bustle of larger cities. We came from Shoper, you could hear cell eyes and dump trucks go by, there's a crack in Gulf Road at 3 o'clock every morning, you hear, Batavia's not like that, it's nice, quiet, it's a great place to live, and it's a town that, that is just, as Tony said, relatives come in from out of town and are astonished by it, and that is something that I hope stays around for a long time.
Jerry?
I'll be newer to the area, we're still being astonished by Batavia, so it's really, really fun, I like the small-town feel, I like, because I like, I love River Street, the farmers market, and all the activities that go on in Batavia Fest, and the soapbox derby we watched this year, which is really fun, I love the small-town feel, and I also like how you just go to, on and around the road a little bit, and every shop you want is there, it's amazing, but it still has a small-town feel, but anything you need, you just go around the road, it's there, and it's, you have, you have all the little, you know, unique shops that are downtown, which I kind of like, and the bigger stores, when, you know, if you need something, or a quick bite to eat, you just run out to random roads, so you could, you could literally live your whole life here in Batavia, so I would like to keep this vision going.
Mary?
I love the small-town feel as well, I love the family-friendly atmosphere of Batavia, my vision for Batavia would be to continue the revitalization of the downtown, I think that makes it even more welcoming, and brings in more people, and, you know, Geneva has their little space with all their shops, Batavia is just wonderful, if not more so, because it has that feel to it that's not too fancy, it's just perfect, and it feels comfortable, and I love that about Batavia.
Alderman Throem?
My original two questions prepared have already been asked, which happens a lot in a committee of 14 people, but I'm gonna take a personal spin on it, when there's conflict or a conundrum, say, whether you vote with your heart or with your constituents, and you have to think something through in your life now, who in your life do you look to for advice and inspiration?
Joe's first up this time.
I would have to say my dad, because I saw him for many years have an opinion on how things were happening within our town, and knowing he had opinions about it, and knowing the struggles that he faced of not being able to be vocal about it, because that was his employer, and knowing that he was in public service for 40 years, and had to keep quiet, that's, that's, he's always had good advice for me, and as a fire chief, you know, he led a crew of 35, 40 volunteers, he made big decisions every day, he still gives me great advice.
Jerry?
I would say my wife is my inspiration and my sounding board, and we have a lot of same views and different views, and a lot of times, she'll set me straight, but I go, I would go to her mostly, she's my sounding board, I like her.
Mary?
My husband, for sure, we love to discuss and debate and talk over every issue, up and down, any way you possibly can, we both search up facts together on the issues, and we talk about it as much as possible, and he's the most supportive person I've ever had in my life.
Tony?
Yeah, my, my parents instilled in me, and I think in all my brothers and sisters, a great responsibility to serve other people, but their work is done now, I would say for me to go to someone now would be my wife, Mona, you know, she, she brings, she's talked me out the ledge many times, and brings different perspectives a lot, you know, growing up on the Arctic Circle in Norway is a whole different place than it is here, although it gets colder in Batavia, believe it or not, but she moved there in 96, and she couldn't believe how cold it was, and she's on the coast, so, but literally on the Arctic Circle, but I get, she keeps me grounded, and she helps me to see a lot of things that I wouldn't normally see if I stayed in my own head.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I guess since the questions are almost over, or may be over right now, just one sentence from each of you, because all four of you, this is a tough decision, at least for me, I'll tell you that right now, so from each of you, one sentence, why should we choose you?
So, Jerry, I, I think you're first up on this one.
I plan on sticking around, even if I don't get this job, and I wanna be active in Batavia, I love, I love that we moved here, and I wanna be heard.
This is for my family and mom's playground.
Tony?
I would say my, I've had commitments to this community in the past, well, as an educator, with the students in Batavia, with the educators of Batavia, and I can, you know, intend to continue to serve the community, so the commitment is to this community, because this community has given to us.
I think I bring a unique skillset to the city of Batavia, an engineering background with technical problem solving, and structured problem solving, as well as a passion about the town I live in, and I'm proud to call home.
Alderman Brown?
I don't think I really have any questions, the mayor stole my question right off the bat. He relates how many meetings there are, but that's okay, he can steal my thunder. But I guess, I just wanna make a comment that, having sat in your shoes at one time, like the mayor mentioned 22 years ago, I do realize how hard it is to sit up there, but I also hope that you realize how hard it is for us to make the decision also, because sitting here tonight, I can tell you, I, one of these days, I'm gonna have to ask Jeanette to help me figure out how many people I've sat through these interviews on, but I can tell you that, when we go back in that room here after, after we're done, to write down, you know, the number four, number three, number two, number one, I think I'm gonna write down number four on all of you, because as far as I'm concerned, you'd all fit in just fine, I think you'd all do the city justice, I think you'd all, all do your ward a great job, and I think you'd fit in very well with this council, so I hope whoever doesn't get... So I hope whoever doesn't get the position does join in in that November meeting, and if that's not something that you're interested in, Jamie, who's in charge of Main Street, is sitting back there, too. She's always looking for volunteers to help out in town. That's another great way to get involved. But I think all the questions that I may have had in my mind have been asked and answered very well, and I just wish all of you the best of luck.
Any other last questions from the council?
Well, we will adjourn here for just a couple of minutes. To do this isn't going to take real long, so it won't keep you in suspense very long. But I just want to offer, as the mayor, kind of following what's already been said, I've sat through all of these over the years, and this is one of the better ones I've ever had as far as quality of the answers and the quality of the candidates. So I thank each and every one of you for stepping forward. Just makes the decision going in that room for the alderman here very difficult as to who's going to be their first choice, their second choice, their third choice, and their fourth choice. And the clerk then gets to add all the numbers up, and then we know the answer to the question.
So why don't we take our brief recess, and we'll go do this?
Okay, so for the record, then, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of deciding on the new Fourth Ward alderman.
Moved.
Second. Who do we have on that? Motion by Meitzler, second by Callahan. Sure. Hold in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay, we are back in regular session, but I need a roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atak?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Throem?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay. Mayor?
Well, we had an interesting vote in quarters. It was somewhat close, but it was a very, everybody said it was a very difficult decision to make, and the choice of the city council was Tony Malloy. We're not at a regular city council meeting, so legally, I think the city attorney would tell me, I can't really swear you in. I need to have you at the next city council meeting. But if you want, I'd invite you to come up and sit in the chair, but probably just don't vote on anything. And secondly, I'd like to really personally thank the other three candidates, and you all certainly showed some fine talent tonight, so I would really want to encourage all of you to continue to hold an interest in what's going on here, and we'll try to find some things for some of you to do as the days move forward here. So I appreciate your good efforts, and thanks for all the commitment you had. This was a difficult process to put you through, but you all mastered it like champs, and I'm very proud of the quality of the candidate we had. Fourth Ward should be very pleased with the constituency that they have up there on the northeast side of Batavia. As one that was born and raised up there in that neighborhood, I'm very proud that we have such an outstanding group of candidates down here tonight representing that area of our town. So thank you all for what you did.
Okay, thank you. Guess we're going to move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is item number eight, which is resolution policy regarding posting of signs on property and violation of property maintenance codes. Memo from Scott Buning, it's coming to the community development. Alderman Stark?
Oh. My browser is not working well tonight, so I will, wait a second. Mine isn't either. It's, we, we're having a problem with iPads in our city server, and I've talked to Howard about it, and occasionally it works and sometimes it doesn't. Okay, so this resolution is consideration of 17-104, our implementing a policy regarding the posting of signs on property in violation of property maintenance codes. And the mayor alluded to this a few weeks ago, and we've been actively pursuing properties that are in violation of property maintenance codes. Code compliance processes can take substantial time to gain compliance on violations. In addition, some property owners actively fight the violation procedures, and this strikes out the compliance period substantially. The city then receives calls and emails regarding the condition of these properties, with citizens thinking that nothing has been being done to correct the problem. So to remedy this and to better inform the public, one solution is to allow the city to erect signs that advise the public of properties that are in various stages of enforcement, such as adjudication or circuit court. Signs would be erected in the public right of way in front of a violation property. This would potentially reduce calls and complaints to the city if the signs are erected advising people that the properties are actively being pursued for enforcement. While the signs could also be construed as shaming, the primary goal is to inform the public of the code enforcement proceedings and to hopefully have property owners expedite having their property be in compliance with the property maintenance codes. Once in compliance, the signs would be removed. So the city attorney, Kevin, or Kevin's office, has drafted this resolution creating a policy for such signs to be considered. This policy would allow the city to post signs on violating properties on more or less uniform basis. These would be erected not during initial court enforcement proceedings, but when code enforcement proceedings have been extended by continuances, or when initial attempts for compliance have failed to yield results. We would not single out individual properties, but apply the policy equally to all properties similarly situated. We can approve the resolution. We can discuss and provide additional direction to staff on changes, or we could not approve the resolution. The pros: implementing such policy would serve to inform the public of active code enforcement proceedings on properties, and may also have the effect of expediting compliance on such properties. The cons: the city sign department would expend funds to create and erect such signs, however these costs would be recouped through the fines that are imposed. The signs could also be considered as negative PR and could advertise more prominently that properties are in violation. Budget impact: undetermined at this time. Funds would need to be expended to create, erect, and remove signs. Staffing impact: no additional staff would be required for this initiative. Timeline for actions: while there's no set timeline, there has been significant interest in the media regarding this initiative and staff recommendation. The action is at the discretion of the committee. So since this is community development, I am going to start, unless there's something you want to add, Scott.
I think I've summarized it in the memo pretty well, so.
It's all right there. So this has been something that, since it was initially announced, and I've spent some time thinking about this, and while it's surface value, you know, I think about, you know, the home in the Fourth Ward on Prairie Street that is an obvious code violation that's all boarded up, that we've had problems with, and I think, oh, erecting a sign in front of this house would be a good idea to get it moving. Conversely, there are homes in the Fourth Ward where there are people who are elderly or infirm, and they can't get, they don't have the funds, they can't get to do this stuff. So now you put a sign in their front yard, and that's akin to public shaming. Or you have a house anywhere in town where the people can't afford to do things, and they have kids at the schools, and so now we erect a sign in front of their house, and now you've got kids in school who, other kids can bully them and say, you've got a sign in front of your house because you're not doing the things you're supposed to do. And to me, that just sounds like public bullying. And I know that that's not the intent, but if we have to enforce this across the board, and it doesn't just matter that it's in a boarded-up house on Prairie, it's someone who could potentially live in this house, to me, I can't support this at all. I mean, I'm embarrassed to even think that we would do that to our neighbors. So I, I'm sorry, I can't support this. Marty?
I am in 100% agreement with you. For me, we can't legislate out of frustration that someone isn't complying with the laws. It brings up those very issues that you talk about. For somebody that already may be prone to not wanting to comply, it might be a badge of honor for their, for their yard. If what we are trying to accomplish is the notification to people that the city is acting upon an issue and that it is in its process, we still have to give due process to the homeowners who have not been convicted of anything yet. It is still going through the legal process. So I would say if you're trying to just inform people, there are different ways that we can do that. We can put a searchable database on the city's website that if somebody wanted to check if there are outstanding citations against it, and as a public information of when those public meetings are going to be held, because the adjudication process is our public hearings and our public matters, people could show up at that. I think it shows a better, a better means to accomplish the same goal, which is to let people know that, yes, it's being acted upon without additional concerns, as you raised.
Mr. Mayor, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I got Jeff Albertson came down tonight, and I'm probably in his office two, three, four times a week talking about this subject, because this seems to be the hot topic right now. Right now, I will tell you, as far as I can remember, there's probably two properties in town that may be ready for a sign. And basically, what happens in this is that Jeff and Rhonda in his office spend an inordinate amount of time, in my opinion, just trying to chase these people down who are, some of them are thumbing their nose at us, others shut the door on us, won't talk to us, defy us, yell at us, and whatever, because they don't want to do it, or they don't care. And in one case, they've left the house and moved someplace else, and I have the neighbors calling me up saying, Mayor, what kind of town are you running? You're allowing my street to become a ghetto neighborhood. And then I have other people call me, specifically about the one that's already been mentioned several times. I had a girl call me in tears the other day because she's trying to sell her house in that neighborhood, and when she goes to sell it, they bring showings in. That house inevitably becomes the topic of conversation about what kind of ghetto place is the city of Batavia running that they allow places like this to sit here in this neighborhood? So I think my idea with this sign was, if nothing else, we were only going to do it after we probably have tried to personally talk to them three or four times. We probably have sent them a letter and a notice, and they still don't want to get it. And so what we're trying to do here is at least allow the neighbors and the public and anybody else that's driving by know that the city of Batavia is trying to act responsibly and respond to this ongoing complaint about the city allowing streets in this town to begin to look like a ghetto. And that's the word that they keep using on me. And so those of you who want to vote not to do this, that's fine, but at least I'll have somebody I can tell all these people to talk to, because then the rest of us are going to have to say, we tried, but nobody wanted to do it.
Dan?
I appreciate the frustration, and I spent a lot of time thinking about this. I read the ordinance, and as the ordinance is written, I generally don't have a problem with it. My question is, one, does this ordinance accomplish what it was that you were looking to do? And then I guess I have a question for the attorneys. Am I reading this correctly? This is the absolute last stop on this, on this train here, is that we have gone through the adjudication, and we are legitimately being ignored. We've run out of options, and that's why we're sticking a sign up.
That isn't the way it was written. So in other words, this was written to allow flexibility?
Right.
It could be written that way, but it isn't.
I'm concerned about vagueness, then, because my thought would be, if I were to support something like this, it would have to be the absolute, absolute last step that we're taking, where we're recognizing that there's nothing we can do about this property. Otherwise, it feels like a scarlet letter to me. It really does.
So basically, that would mean that it's been through adjudication and still nothing done. And things don't go to adjudication, really, unless there's no movement and time's gone by and people are just digging their heels in. Is that right?
Yeah, and it depends on the process, too. I mean, some, some properties are so egregious, we just go right to circuit court. You know, if it's, if there's a, you know, public health and safety issue, we'll take it right to circuit court. But if it's, if it's a typical property maintenance situation, we try to talk to them, we do put door hangers, we send them letters, and then we take them into the adjudication process if we still don't, you know, get compliance. But, you know, that does take time also, because we have certain notices we have to do before we can even get in the adjudication process in the first place. And then, you know, they can ask for a continuance, you know, maybe sometimes they're working with us to a certain extent, and we have to, you know, let it go a little bit longer. So, you know, there's going to have to be some discretion on our part to say, okay, you know, they really have been trying to just, you know, you know, drag us along in this and not comply honestly. And, you know, in those circumstances, I think is when we would then, you know, work with the sign situation here. So, so it could be that, you know, gets through the process with adjudication, but it also might be that it's still in the adjudication process potentially as well. So it's going to be kind of a...
The vagueness there is where I have a problem.
It is.
My question then is, are these properties in circuit court? Are we in front of a judge with these properties, and we're still getting nothing? Then yeah, fine, put a sign up. But anything beyond that, we're just basically putting a sign up saying, the city has given up on this.
We would take away A and B and leave C and D, and probably modify them a little bit to make it a last resort type of thing.
It just, Susan? You know, the thumbing the noses at the city is the issue that I have. You know, people that can't afford to do it or trying and going very slowly for what are the reason, I think that's something that can be considered. But when people just don't care, that is when I think that our hands are tied, and we're going to have to do something. But I also think we could take another approach at the same time and try to, and this has been talked about a little bit, maybe create a beautification committee, try to come up with standards for what the city expects in a neighborhood. And maybe even some sort, some cities have contests, that may not be the right word, but programs that can be done. So, and I know some cities have standards, too. We don't have that sort of thing. So, you know, it could be maybe a multi-pronged approach to trying to get at something that's really important to our city, to protect property values and make it a better place to live. And for the most part, it is. Mark?
Susan, I agree with you and Marty. I just don't, I don't see putting up signs. And I think the, the biggest thing here is that you have to do it equally. And I can't, I can speak to my own standards and what I want, but I have no idea the situation's happening in the 9,000 to 10,000 homes across this community. To sit there and think that I would shame somebody when, with, maybe they have a disability, whatever it is, that is preventing them from doing this, who knows the hardships that they're going through? And frankly, a lot of that is none of our business. And so I would not be in favor of this. I just think that that's because of the fact that you have to do it equally. We can't say, oh, well, those people are thumbing their nose at us, so we're going to go after them. And these people over here, they can't do it because their, their father passed away, and so the person who's taking care of it no longer does it. Eh, let's not put a sign up in their yard. Can't do that. We have to be equal.
It's timely on this one, because I was, I was spending some time riding around with Rhonda earlier today. Code enforcement is messy, and it takes time, and there are so many circumstances that are not clear and cut. And I agree, the vagueness of this is what troubles me. There is a lot in here that just screams to me, well, we felt like they deserved a chance, so we didn't. We're kind of tired of dealing with that, so we did. That's where I struggle with this one. I don't want to be the town that is trying to put up for our own protection. I want to be the town that, as I saw with Rhonda, is trying to work with people, trying to understand what the circumstances are, and there are going to be some that just, yeah, there's property owners that don't care, and it's ultimately going to go to court, and it's going to have to be settled the hard way. But I don't want to get to a point where, to make sure people know that we're doing our job, we're putting a sign on the front lawn, and now it's no longer the eyesore that, you know, some people notice when they drive past. Everybody that drives past notices the sign. Everybody. And the person that's having the problem either didn't care about the property, so a sign is not going to make a difference, or they can't resolve it themselves, and so, again, the sign is not going to make the difference.
It's, to me, it speaks to the gentrification of Batavia, and if, if I wanted to make sure that I lived in a place that was perfectly maintained, I would move someplace that has a homeowners association, so they can bully the people who live in their neighborhood versus the city of Batavia bullying. Mike?
I think it comes down to two issues that, you know, I'm opposed to bullying, okay? Flat out just opposed to bullying, and I believe that is bullying. And, and so I agree with Dan, I agree with everyone on that score.
No, you have to agree with me.
Of course you, of course you. I know better not to.
You never agree with me, Mike.
Once in a while, every blue moon. But, but I think, you know, to the mayor's point, and I don't know, I'm not a, I guess, supporting signs, but, you know, to the, to the residents who are maintaining their property and trying to maintain their property values, it becomes a kind of a fiduciary duty we have to these people to some degree, that, you know, trying to sell their home, they can't sell it, or they can't get the true value of their home because someone is absconding with the loss. I don't know the, the solution to it. Maybe adjudication, we, we kick-start it somehow, we do something with that, but I gotta know we have to feel for these people. But I, I gotta know, we have to feel for these people. We, you know, the, the regular residents who maintain their properties and, and the people who cannot maintain their properties for whatever reasons that they're unable to, we have to have some, some heart towards those folks and the ones who just don't care. I don't know how to deal with them yet, but I guess that's what our discussion's about. But I believe that's the issue. But there are a lot of things involved in just putting up a sign.
And I think that there, there's a difference between gentrification and maintaining your property. I mean, I don't think they go together. I think any community of any sort can be, the homes can be well-maintained. There's a certain standard that everyone should be able to live near a neighbor that has pride and ownership and is taking care of their homes. And I agree, we have a duty to allow everyone that and this, or make sure that everyone has that in this town.
Dave?
I, I, I think I gotta support the mayor and his effort here and what he's trying to do. And I haven't talked to him about this, but I, I think what, what I'm reading out of this is you've got a few people in town that you're just at the end. You can't do anything more to people. You can't do anything more about it. So you're trying to come up with a solution of how you can handle these people. And to your point on the one over on Prairie Street where, you know, there's people trying to sell their house, well, maybe they'd have a little bit easier time selling that house if there was a sign there that they could, you know, the realtor or the homeowner, potential homeowner could look at and say, "Well, hey, the city's on top of this." As, as with anything, I, I think, you know, I understand everybody's concerns. I really do. I, I see the bullying thing. I see the, you know, what if you got the old lady that just can't get out from the bushes anymore? Are we going to put up the sign there? I know there's been times in the past and I'm sure the staff today still works with a lot of these people that there are organizations that they'll group together and they'll come over and they'll help take care of somebody's lawn. It happens quite often. So for those people, those aren't the people that you're looking to put a sign up in their front yard. You're looking to put a sign up in their front yard for somebody that just puts their thumb to their nose and says, "I don't care." I say this too often, but I'm going to say it again. I think there needs to be some flexibility in this ordinance so staff can be flexible with it. I think that we should try it. And in a year, if we're hearing from the community that this is terrible, that my kids get bullied when they go to school because of the sign up in their yard, which I don't think they're going to see because it's two people that we're talking about here at this point. So I think we should try it. And if we hear that it's, that the reaction out of it is a terrible reaction, we can always come back and amend, amend the ordinance.
Scott?
Understand the frustration. I, I think we're, we're trying to, you know, levy ordinance for two people, basically. But Mike brought up a point. Is there a way to, to ease or to smooth out, to quicken up the adjudication process? I mean, yourself said, "Hey, for frustration, we go, right go to Circuit," right? What's the problem with doing that? I mean, my concern is this. You know, the vast majority of people that drive by a home that, where they see a yard, a sign that there's a scarlet letter in the front yard, they, they have, they have no idea what's going on there. They're making a judgment based on, "Oh, look, look what the city's doing. Look, here comes Big Brother." You know, they have no idea what's going on. And I, and I get it. I, I understand the frustration. But, but as opposed to us doing that, is there a way to give you more teeth to be able to adjudicate that in a, in a timelier fashion, to give you some teeth to be able to get this thing to closure?
I would love to be able to say that there is a way to do that. We created the adjudication process to create an easier way for properties that perhaps were not going to be as problem situations and to try and move things along faster. But either process has certain notification requirements and due process. They can ask for continuances, multiple continuances, depending on, you know, what the judge or the hearing officer asked for. Kevin can certainly, you know, opine more on some of this than I can. But the, the judicial process, whether it's adjudication or court process, is messy and it takes time. Unfortunately, you know, people's rights are being, you know, determined, you know, on these things, whether we're, you know, going to go in there and clean up and then lean their property or whatever we do. So there's not really any easy way to do this, unfortunately, and it's difficult.
I mean, I think, I think the point though is the ones that are real problems, they could give a rip if they have a sign in their front yard. I mean, that's, that's, and that's the problem. So why go through the exercise? I, that's...
Well, we don't know. We haven't done it yet. It may work. Steve said we could give it a try.
You know, I would offer up that the two houses that I'm talking about, neither one of them, as far as I know, is occupied, correct. There's nobody living in either one of them. And we got absentee, one, I think we just got an absentee owner that apparently, I don't know, doesn't care or whatever. I fully understand what Susan's frustration and several of the rest of you are. I certainly share that. But, you know, this has been an ongoing thing with these people. This isn't something we just started talking about a month ago. Rhonda and Jeff have been beating their heads against the wall with these folks. And, you know, one, that went up there in Prairie Street, they were breaking back in the house and moving back into it in the middle of the night and everything else. So finally, we had to go up there and get really serious about it. And I mean, I think that place should have a sign in the front saying, "If nothing else, that this property is under adjudication." So that all the people walking their kids to Louise White School or going into the neighborhood or whatever, somebody's trying to sell their house up the street, I'm sure that lady's going to be calling some of you now when this whole story comes out because she's pretty upset and rightfully so, that there is some, you know, some real issues here. This isn't like we're laying this out here and we're just going to freewheel this thing. As far as I was concerned, there was only two signs going up in town and we were going to try it with this because I don't know how else, if nothing else, I get really frustrated as the mayor of this town to have somebody call me up at the phone on my office and say, "You're running a ghetto in this town." This, you know, they start telling me the address and it's the same address, and "Why aren't you doing anything about this? What's wrong with your staff down there? What's wrong with you? Can't you come up there and do something about this?" You know, and so this is something that just is a burr in my saddle right at the moment and it doesn't seem to want to go away. And it's only two properties.
Susan?
Alan?
I guess what I thought about this, would we do this if somebody hasn't paid their electric bill for six months? Would the county do this if somebody doesn't pay their taxes? Would we go out and start erecting signs in people's yards for that? Because that affects every one of us sitting at the table and everybody in the audience and everybody in the city and our electric rates and our taxes. And that's truly financial responsibility for the community.
I don't see any of us supporting that. I don't know that that's something that's going to go. That's one of the issues that I have with this, especially the way it's worded now. I guess in, in the main, I'd like to see us find a way to try to resolve these problems. And whether that's we put together groups in each ward and that's something that we as aldermen start to pick up from our community development department and, you know, our code compliance to try to put people together that can help them. I mean, that's one of the things in the neighborhood. If somebody falls down and breaks their leg and they're the one person that lives in the house, usually your neighbors end up coming over and help you cut your grass or take care of your property. I don't know why we have to throw this completely under the bus and try to use a sign to do that with. I know that there are certain properties that have been a problem. We had a house that was abandoned in the neighborhood that I live in for at least probably seven to 10 years before it finally got condemned and then taken down after it was bought through a property sale. So I mean, I've seen this happen firsthand within a block of my house. I don't know how a sign is going to solve the problem when everything else we've tried, including adjudication or Circuit Court, doesn't resolve the problem. And I don't see a benefit to putting the sign out in front of somebody's house to make that happen.
I think, I think the mayor brought up a benefit. It's kind of awareness. When someone doesn't pay their taxes or their electric bill, if their property is maintained, it's not affecting anyone else on the block. It's when people, this is a property value issue, I think. And when a sign goes up, there's notice that the city is trying to do something. And I think that the woman down the street who's putting her house on the market would appreciate that. At least I would.
So there's the five or 10 people that have called the mayor that are going to take us to change a complete policy for the city and try to do something to resolve that?
Well, I've gotten many calls and that, and different properties in my wards. So I, I don't think it's a small issue. I don't think that signs are going to go up, but maybe if signs go up, people will be aware if they don't maintain their property.
I think for those people that want to know that and are calling the mayor to ask for the information, it's like Marty said, it's available on the website that says, "Here's the 10 properties this month that were taken to court." And there's a sign, you know, there's an easy way to find that on the website. So people that need to be or want to be informed and want to know this can find that. And then when the realtor goes out to show the house next door to it, it's very easy for them to say, "Here's the city website. This is what they're doing about it. This property has been abandoned for a year or whatever the circumstances can be found out by somebody from the website."
Scott?
Can I?
With, with this process, and we'll just take the house on Prairie Street because we all know about it. So it's, it's been through this process. What are the steps in the process? So can you walk me through from, I know we did the initial cleanup there and then now it's boarded up. So now what would be the next step and the next step and the next step for that property?
Well, this one's a little bit convoluted because it's also in a foreclosure situation and also in a quasi-probate situation. The original owner died. And so, you know, now the heirs and the bank are trying to sort things out to try and figure out who's going to deal with the problems on the site. So, you know, it's in Circuit Court right now. You know, we have gotten a court order to clean it up. We have gotten a court order to do some other things, you know, on the property and such. But at this point, you know, we would be filing a lien on the property and, you know, we could in theory foreclose on the lien to collect our funds that we've spent to clean up the property. But I'm going to throw it over to Kevin as to the, the foreclosure process and how we would, you know, latch on to that process in order to, you know, collect our funds and things like that, so.
So can I interrupt? Because maybe that's the extreme case. What about the other one? I mean, if this is in foreclosure and that's, I mean, it just seems like it's going to happen eventually. What about the person that is thumbing the nose at us? What is that process?
Yeah, well, and it also, it depends on the process we take it through. I mean, normally we go through adjudication process first, which is the, the hearing officer that's held here at City Hall and then they're fined. But at some point, you know, the fines only go so far. Now that's all we can do. So after that, you know, it's kind of a judgment call on our part as to how long we let it go through that process. If they're, you know, getting fined $750 a day and they're still not doing anything, then our next choice is to then go into the Circuit Court process and we push it into, into that process so they can perfect the, the fines on the property. And then they can do further things than the hearing officer can do. So they can, you know, mandate cleanups and, and other things that, you know, would try and get the property, you know, into shape with the code, code requirements. So Circuit Court is kind of our last resort essentially.
And what happens at Circuit Court level?
Well, they can impose fines and they can also impose court orders to make them clean it up. You know, if they don't, then they would be in contempt of court. So there are things that they can do in that regard.
Is that the house in St. Charles, the Mick?
That's what was happening with that one, right.
Okay. That's a good example of...
And that took 30 years to get that in compliance, so.
It seemed like 30. It was probably about 15.
15, was it? Okay. I thought, I thought the permit started in the 1970s, so.
Kevin, when it comes to enforcement, how does that work exactly? So, you know, in, in what Scott has said and what the mayor has said, there's a certain amount of discretion. So the city can say, "Yes, this house needs to, to do this, but this has special circumstances." How do you apply the law equally between houses so that you don't have that slippery slope where it's like, "We, we showed favoritism to this homeowner and we didn't to this homeowner." How do you balance that? Where's the precedent?
Well, we should be consistent, but there is discretion. The, the police exercise discretion when, you know, they pull people over. They don't pull everyone over. You know, if they're picking on someone for the wrong reasons, you know, picking on someone because there's a personal animus or, you know, they are in a suspect classification, you know, then, then with, then there's legal issues involved with that. If they're weighing circumstances and making discretionary decisions, there's a certain latitude that the law allows for that. The issue is, you know, you really don't want too much discretion exercised. You want it to be pretty consistent, but you don't necessarily want the hammer coming down on every, you know, in every case because there are circumstances that, that are taken into effect. And I think Rhonda does a pretty good job balancing all of that. She's done it for a long time. And I don't hear any complaints about, about that aspect of it. It's a little bit different once it gets to adjudication or court. At that point, the time for discretion or leeway is kind of over and now it's in the hands of, of a hearing officer or a judge and they're going to apply law. Now, sometimes hearing officers and judges will take into account circumstances. And, you know, every situation's a little bit different. So you may get what might appear to be different outcomes sometimes in what appear to be similar circumstances. So that, I don't, I don't have a good answer for you, but I think striving for consistency in how things are addressed is important.
Thank you.
Can I?
Sorry.
Yeah, I just, I came here kind of agreeing with everybody that I didn't like being reactionary and just reacting out of frustration and didn't like the vagueness of it. But it seems to me that we have kind of the perfect test market here. We have two homes that don't have children and are going to school who will be ridiculed, don't have an old lady there or a disabled person. We can put two signs up and see if it works. Do it for three months and if both houses get improved, we can come back and go, "Nice work. I think we have something to work with." If nothing's done, we can go, "It ain't going to work. Nobody's going to react to a sign," and wipe it off the books. Or maybe one works and one, and one does something, one doesn't, and then we make that decision. But we kind of have a perfect test market here that isn't that. It's pretty benign. It's not going to offend too many people and we could gain more knowledge before we make a decision. That's my thought.
I like that.
Marty?
Yeah. But it's not just going to be because it would have worked by now. This doesn't change the process. And if it is just about informing people that the city is doing something, there are other ways to do it.
But you don't know. You're making that assumption. And I'm saying, why don't we test it?
We know, we know.
To make fact instead of assumption.
We know that the mayor is getting calls and he want, the people want to see something done. There's different ways to inform them other than a sign. I feel so strongly about this because the minute the government starts determining and marking places as an undesirable location, that is a slippery slope, that history has already shown that. You don't do that. You do not have government...
But you just said there's ways to do it. So you're supporting doing it, but saying we can't do it.
There are ways to have the public information available, which is the process, which are the notifications that this property via the public process is posted and it shows in a public hearing for when we're posting the adjudication. The extra step of going into our neighborhoods to show, to make it a point that the government, by goddamn, is going to mark this territory is not a part that I want for our community to do.
But it is okay to post it on the website.
You know when the adjudication are. You know when those hearings are going. Those are not, you're not singling out neighborhoods where you drive through it now. Those people that have vested interests in it are going to show up just as it is for any public court hearing. Somebody gets a traffic citation, somebody gets an arrest. You have somebody that it's an open record, that that person's court dates are posted. You know when it is. Are we going to then, to the person that's on their third DUI, put something out in front of their house because they now are a, are a repeated DUI? Or they're a child molester. It's a, it's not convicted yet, but we know one lives here, but it's still going through the process. If you want to follow, it's still posted.
Those are extreme examples. We're looking at.
But you have to think about the extreme examples because when you start down the path, you make it easier to the next situation and the next situation until it gets so blurred.
But you're splitting.
Not.
I get your point, but you're splitting hairs as to how it's perceived to the public. It's still.
No, you're talking about individual rights. These people are not convicted of anything yet. They're not. If it was, if the courts wanted to put a sign out there because they had a court order to do so, bam, you have a judicial determination that this property is being cleaned up. We're doing something. These houses, you can see, are not done yet with that process. They are still innocent until proven guilty, and that's what we have to maintain.
Mike, you had something?
Yeah. I think if you don't pay your real estate taxes, you're publishing the King County Chronicle that you didn't pay your taxes. I would be interested in the situations. We probably have hundreds of cases where Rhonda has went out. If there's that senior citizen lady that says, I need help. I can't maintain it. What do we do then?
Well, I mean, the first step is, we try to help them. I mean, that's the first thing we try to do, especially if they have a situation where they.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a situation where, you know, they have financial issues, they're elderly, whatever, and Rhonda has resources that she tries to bring in to, you know, with church groups and other, you know, people that can help out, you know, maybe she finds some people to paint their house or whatever the case may be. So, I mean, that's our first step is really to try and see if there's a situation where they can't help themselves, we try to reach out and take the extra step to actually find resources to help them if we can.
And I think there's a big difference between people who have hardships and people who just don't care. So I would be the same as Dave and the same as Nick. I would think that we'd have to give this a try for a few.
Mr. O'Brien?
I'm going to say this. You know, Nick made a good point. You know, it's not going to hurt anybody if we do this. But, and Marty, I never agree with Marty. But I agree with him now. And my issue is this.
Coming to find it is kind of disagreeable.
My issue is this, is that if Nick is, if we do this test pilot, now, one of these buildings, we're not shaming anyone because it's already in the courts. No one lives in it. It's being condemned. But the other one, we're successful that, hey, the person's shamed. Hey, that worked. What are we going to do then? Then we're going to vote for signs in people's yards? And that's my fear, that it will work. And so I'd have to side with Marty on this and say, no signs.
Well, my point was not, A, I wouldn't use, in this resolution, the term shame should not be used because I agree that the scarlet letter approach isn't. But if it gets to the point, I would clean it up like Dan had first said, get rid of the vagueness, but at least we'll know it's something to work with. Why go down the path if it's not even going to work? That's my thought.
Dan?
Two low-risk houses. If it doesn't work, we'll move on.
Dan, you had another comment?
Marty, if you and I are agreeing on something, again, I have to say this, then we must be in the right direction. If I want to look up a sex offender, I got to go to the website. I can find them. If I want to know if someone has their third DUI, I can see it in the police blotter. By placing a sign in front of someone's house, the more I think about this, it is the wrong direction to go. That said, if we had a very tight ordinance or if two of us said, we direct staff to stick a sign up in front of this yard, we have processes in place. They seem to be working for us except for two properties. So do we need to increase our budget for our legal department to sue these people, bring them into court and rein them in, get be done with this? Do we need to make $150,000 offer on a lot and buy their lot and level it and then sell it? I'd be more interested in pouring money into the two problems that we have as opposed to changing a system that seems to be generally working for us. Am I completely off base here or it seems like Rhonda's doing a good job and it seems like ordinances are working? I just do not want to go back to that discussion we had a month ago. Is this illegal or is this tacky? We have to be so careful.
Right. Well, I mean, there's other options, obviously, if we wanted to buy the property and tear down the house. I mean, you know, one of the properties has two lots on it, so it, you know, it could be easily saleable.
Would that be cheaper? Could we make a profit?
I don't think we're planning to make a profit, but I mean, at least we get our money back, you know, from that.
Could we pay our fines? Could we recoup what we've lost on it and then sell it and let someone build a beautiful home there?
That's possible. I mean, we'd have to, you know, talk to the bank and negotiate with them about, you know, purchasing it out of foreclosure and everything else.
Maybe we should direct staff to do that instead. That sounds like a better solution to me.
Drew, you had a comment?
Yeah, so a couple of random thoughts. I actually, sitting here, had Nick's idea and said, yeah, this is a great test case. And I thought it through, and what I came up with was, I completely disagree with the underlying principle of the test case, which is putting signs in somebody's front yard. And even though it's a perfect test case and we may learn something, if it got to the second, I won't support the second step, so taking the first step makes no sense. And I've had, there's been at least one of these in the seventh ward that I've had regular conversations with some people over, and I think it's thankfully resolving itself now. But the nature of the conversations generally wasn't, why aren't you doing anything? It's, I know you're doing something. What's going on now? I heard something months ago. I haven't heard anything else. What's going on now? It's an information thing. And so, like Marty was saying and Alan said and other people have said, you know, we, the adjudication process and what's going on and where it is, it's all public record stuff. If we make it easy for somebody to find for an interested party, and there's, you know, there's going to be a couple of them. The calls on this one property I got came from one or two people generally who were the neighborhood spokespeople. And if they had a place to go to and they could look up and see, oh, okay, it's going to be in, you know, court on this date, and then they could follow the process, I think that's helping them out as much as and more than probably sticking a sign in the yard, which gives them no additional information other than, hey, we're working on it, but here's a place to see exactly where it is in the process. So they have some expectations of, okay, the court date's not for another six weeks. This is terrible unless something changes. I know it's just, I'm going to have to wait it out for six weeks. If something weird starts going on with the property, I know I can call somebody about it, but there's a thing happening in six weeks and it might get me some resolution then, so that's where I've been down on it.
Thanks.
I have one more question.
Yes, Ellen Wolf.
Kevin, well, you were writing this ordinance and looking for that. Did you look for similar ordinances in other towns or any other communities that handle this this way? Has anybody done this out there and had good results, bad results with it?
Yeah, there was, believe it or not, there was a case. And so I looked at the ordinance, the court upheld it on the basis that they weren't picking properties arbitrarily, but they had a policy. So I just used that policy. So there wasn't any more thought behind it than, okay, this was one that the court upheld. It is vague or, if you want to look at it differently, flexible. But I, you know, there really wasn't a whole lot more thought into it. I just found something that had been approved by a court and threw it into this ordinance so we could talk about it. That was it.
Anybody have anything else? Any questions of Kevin, Scott? Did you want to come up and approach? Come on up. Carl, please state your name for the record.
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street, Batavia. And first of all, I have to say, intelligent, thoughtful debate. This council is just awesome. If America could only do this, we would simply be in much better shape. But I did want to interject something I haven't heard, like with the VFW, I tell them our most important commodity is our public image. And we already have had Pam Zekman throw us on the TV channels. And this isn't really the way I want Batavia. I would want, as a citizen for Batavia, to be represented on the TV in Chicago, that we are putting in the shame billboards or whatever. It's just the public image. I think that would be a bad public image for us to do that. It's just a different way I've looked at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Anyone else? Scott, did you have anything else you wanted to say or?
Susan. Mark had something.
Mark?
Just a really quick.
I actually, I was looking right past him with Jeff because I was going to ask Jeff if he had anything to add too. But he's got his hands like right here, so I'm like.
I did this. I did this. I'll stand if you do.
Oink.
So, yeah, I mean, a lot of the things we've said, I think getting on the website, that's a much better approach. I think we're trying to solve for like the 0.02% problem. We have two homes out of 10,000 households in the community, and I know it's irritating. I'm in IT as well. I only hear the complaints, so it stinks. I mean, I hate that. I mean, Alan, nobody, you know, comes to you and says, hey, my car's working great. You know, it's, so we have to deal with the complaint. That's our job, and it stinks, but as soon as you start, the word starts spreading, those neighbors will start spreading the word, oh, yeah, they're taking care of it, and they're doing what they can. We're limited in what we can do. And I just, yeah, again, I'll just keep on saying that the case you talked about has to do with the fact that they were doing it equally, and that's where we're going to run into a problem, is somebody's going to want to cherry pick and say, yep, that one's bothering me. And that's, I think that's the slippery slope we go down because, yeah, do you start putting the signs in the yard saying, you know, this person's a sex offender? Absolutely not. Can't. But it's available out there for everybody to know. And, oh, this person doesn't, you know, pick up after their dog in the park. What do we keep on, you just keep on escalating this, so.
Can I just briefly add one thing to Carl's comment about the?
Sure, Nick.
The image. I had two people come up to me and go, hey, I saw Batavia in the news when I was downtown Chicago. I'm like, oh, boy. Yeah, we had, no decision's been made. And they both said, no, I think it's great. I got a house like that on my block. I just love seeing you guys do something about it. So I was surprised to hear that even though it's in the public image, it's divided.
Sorry, I have one question.
Lucy? So we're saying that there are no other things that we can do to improve this situation. I mean, putting a sign out is one thing, but are there other things? Can we really think about? I think there are more than two properties. I, you know, I.
Oh, sure.
I mean, when we're talking about that, it's not just two properties that we're dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole host of, you know, violations that we're dealing with on a regular basis. I mean, we have, you know, dozens and dozens every year that we're contending with. Some are more, you know, apt to comply than others, and some, you know, either they don't have the wherewithal, they want to thumb their nose at the city, whatever the case may be. So, you know, we have various properties in different stages. And especially when we had a lot of the foreclosures going on, that was particularly difficult because just trying to find somebody, whether it's the bank or the owners, to get in there and, you know, mow the lawn, that was real tough. So, I mean, luckily, the foreclosures, you know, have kind of worked their way through most of the market. There's still foreclosures out there, but, you know, it's not as bad as it used to be. So it's a tough thing, and it does take time, unfortunately, and.
But are we missing anything? Is there, are there other things that we can be doing? I guess that's what I don't completely understand yet.
Unless we're going to start fencing properties to screen them off from the property, from the road, I mean, you know, we could, you know, that would be a possibility if we put up a temporary fence or something like that. That might be an option, but, you know, you might still see the building. I'll throw it to Kevin. I mean, we've taken it through the adjudication process. We've taken it through the court process. I'm not sure what else we can do, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, you can get a court order ordering them to clean it up, and if they don't clean it up, you have to go back to court and get another court order. And I mean, that Sebastian Harsh case is a perfect example of someone, if they just don't want to do it and dig their heels in, you know, and judges are reluctant to, you know, throw the gauntlet down and put them in jail, but that's what happened for a time in that case. I mean, that's really extreme.
Right. I mean, in the case of this one on Prairie Street, I mean, you know, it's obviously convoluted because of the ownership situation. I mean, we haven't talked about trying to acquire that property. Obviously, that's going to cost some money, but, you know, we could get our monies back if we sell the property for redevelopment or whatever. I mean, that certainly would be an option there.
Can we go in and clean it up and either put a lien on the property or build them?
We have done that.
We've done that.
We have done that. We've cleaned up the property.
Both of these properties?
Not, I don't believe on the one, the other one, but on the one on Prairie Street, we have done it. We have cleaned it up. We did lien the property, and we also did board it up just because of the fact that they, the people that were occupying were still trying to get in there, even though there was a court order for them not to be in there, so.
So, and do we do this regularly? So that's something.
A lot of times. I mean, we hope not to do it regularly, but, I mean, that's the part of the process that we follow, yes.
Dan?
It feels like we have processes in place. It feels like if we really do want to react strongly on something, that it would be appropriate for maybe staff to bring it to us in executive session for imminent litigation. I don't see any other solutions to this, so I would make a motion to table this.
Second.
Motion to table by.
Chance.
I knew that. Chance. Yeah, exactly. You're right, set of history. Second by McFadden. I think we should take a roll call on this.
Can we have discussion on that?
Oh, discussion.
Kevin, for clarification, we should, when you table something, it should be tabled to a date certain, correct? You can't just leave it hanging there forever.
If you're talking about like a public hearing or something where you'd have to give notice over again, you certainly want to table it to a certain date. Other than that, I don't think there's an issue with process to simply tabling it indefinitely. Of course, someone then is going to have to bring it back up, but.
Okay. So are we, do we need a date? Can we just put this off into the future?
We could.
A specific date?
No, we could put it off in the future.
To be brought back at a later time is warranted.
Right.
Okay.
Or I could withdraw the motion and we can vote on this thing, and I hope it crashes and burns. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion regarding this ordinance?
I'd make a motion that we approve this ordinance as presented. I just for a second.
Second.
Was there a second to your first motion?
Yes.
There was, and he was.
So that we have to rescind the second?
Sorry.
Yes, rescind.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have a motion by Chance and a second by Callahan?
Yes.
Voice, or sorry, roll call. Chance?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Savadi?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attack?
No.
Stark?
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you.
Three to 10.
Thank you.
Yes, Marty?
If another alderman would join me, I'd like to make sure that we have on the website available information so that people know which properties are in adjudication so that interested parties can follow the status of those that affect them.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, I just want to make a comment. Fortunately, I guess you're not going to have to vote on this one, but when I was sworn in, the night I sat down, after I was sworn in, I had to vote on whether or not we were going to allow the Dairy Queen to be built where it was built.[1651.76] where it was built. So this is a little bit bigger deal than the Dairy Queen.
I had the chickens, chickens ordinance. It was my first vote. Chickens. Yeah.
Twenty-two years is still resonating.
Okay, let's go on to item number nine, which is the discussion on One Washington Place. And Laura, you just going to take, take off with that?
Sure. It was recently reported, both in my project status and then also in the newspapers as well, we've hit an interesting juncture in this project where, you know, to all appearances, it seems like nothing has been done on the project. But in reality, once the plan commission decision was made and City Council overturned that and decided the project was going forward, there's been a lot of action on the part of the developer. That's the point at which they make a huge investment in the architectural drawings for this project. At a certain juncture, they then take those architectural drawings and they get some construction bids to determine the accuracy of their forecasting of what those construction costs were going to be. The unfortunate circumstance that we have before us now is that those construction bids came in anywhere between six to eight million dollars more than the pro forma that had been done back in 2015. So this is a difference in costs between 2015. And that was, you know, prior to the time that the developer had done all of the boring tests to determine the level of the bedrock of the project. And so that is an issue that faces us today. It was back on August 15th, actually, we were meeting with the developer. We actually were talking about two changes to the redevelopment agreement that we thought would, you know, be an improvement that we'd like to see because the process of the entitlement process took longer than expected. And so it was going to take longer for the developer to get us these construction drawings to community development for their review and approval. And we were running up against some deadlines within the redevelopment agreement that the developer had no intention of holding us to those dates because the delay in the process was, you know, no one's fault. And so we wanted to make an adjustment there. And then also, the structure of the, you know, the developer had been willing to put into the agreement that if the increment was insufficient to cover the service on the bond debt, that the city had the right to implement the special service area fee. And, but in the early years, since the public part of that project would be built first, and the public part of the project would not have increments, the ability to charge the SSA is reduced as well. The developer was willing to, expressed a willingness to backstop that and say that in the, in the early stages of the project, that they would be willing to pay, make sure that the bond debt was covered. So those were the two amendments that we were seeking to make to the redevelopment agreement. But then this, this issue came about. And really, that is such a significant increase in the cost of the project that we really had to hit the pause button and together determine how we were going to get past that issue. As all of you know, the city has hired a construction representative, and the name escapes me, Gary, can you, Carl Walker?
Carl Walker.
Carl Walker. And one of the two biggest cost issues that the developer is facing are the cost of the concrete for the parking structure, as well as the excavation for the parking structure, because the, the parking structure is subterranean. You know, built at grade, you could use a different type of concrete, and building the project would be simpler and less expensive. So one of the things that we suggested was, you know, you have an architect, your architect has designed that parking structure in a certain way, perhaps you'd like to hire the construction representative, the engineering firm who, all they do all day, every day is design and oversee the construction of parking structures, and to consult with them to see if any cost can be removed from the design of that parking structure without affecting the integrity, not only of the parking structure, but knowing that we've got four levels of residential that sit above that as well. That meeting was held last Thursday?
Before.
Before, the Thursday before Labor Day. It was a long meeting. It was like three hours long, but the end of which, the structural engineers, both those from this engineering firm and also those from the developer, determined that there was not the opportunity to value engineer the project by using, say, a, a precast versus a cast-in-place concrete. Therefore, the developer said that they would look at, if the city was amenable to it, other ways of re-engineering the project. And by that, they were looking at three different opportunities. One was to eliminate some of the exterior building facade at the parking deck level, including eliminating some of the face brick and replacing the windows with larger open-air elements that are more typically found in parking garages, to eliminate the retail space that was planned for along Wilson Street and replace that with additional residential units, and to eliminate parking spaces and add residential units in the second-level garage that would be located along State Street and also the North River Street frontages. So, and of course, any of those type of changes to the composition of the building and to its facade would require the project to then go back through the entitlements process before the plan commission and then also before the historic preservation commission as well. So we'd definitely be taking a few steps back in the process. But the other elements, because that is estimated, perhaps only a cost savings of about 1.3 million. Shordine has also applied to have the development site placed into a enterprise zone, so there's a savings associated with that. That, a project of this type that is located within an enterprise zone would be eligible to, to buy their construction materials tax-free. And so the elimination of the retail tax on those building materials is estimated to be a savings of 700,000. So 1.3 million and 700,000 only gets us $2 million of the way to resolving this issue. So also in consideration would be that either/or and likely both, the city and the developer would end up putting more cash into the, the project as well. There's, there's been no decision on the part of the developer if that's feasible. I think what we, we, why I'm bringing this before you today is to determine whether you think that it is feasible to redesign the project in the way that the developer has suggested, and if you think that there is the possibility that the city would contribute more to the project. And what does that mean? That means increasing the amount of the bond issue. What we have working against us there is time. So we have established the TIF as of the beginning of this year, and we expected construction to begin this fall. The TIF is established for a 23-year period of time. And so that's the time within which we have to recapture the increment created by the project in order to pay off the, the issued bonds. The additional thing that we have working in our favor here that is not typical of most TIF projects is this backstop of the SSA that can be assessed on any, on this developer as the original owner of the property. But throughout the 23 years of this TIF, any year in which the increment would be insufficient to pay off the bond debt, the city can assess the balance of what is owed on the bond debt to the then-current owners through use of the SSA. An added element to this, and I would ask that the developer, you know, provide us with a confirmation of this or the actual report. The estimate for the potential rent that they expected to be able to get for the units, they redid that study as well, and it came back that they would be able to charge more for those residential units than they expected. But it's, you know, it's, it's not any amount that's really going to put a dent in the, the construction costs, but it may then have an impact on, you know, the, the future potential increments that we might expect on the project. So, you know, I just, I want to make sure that you've got all of the, the current facts that we know of the situation. I also want you to know that staff and the developer have been working very hard together on the same team, trying to come up with a potential solution. But it really requires a judgment on the part of the City Council as to whether those, those elements that would be the city's additional contributions, if there's a willingness to do that or not.
Did he offer up, the developer, any, what was attributed to the, you know, pronounced increase in construction costs as opposed to his budgeted, his budget?
I'm gonna, I was not at the, the meeting with Carl Walker, but Gary, could you elaborate on that at all?
He keeps stating that the most limiting factor are earth excavation and concrete. Those are the two largest cost drivers to...
So did I hear you earlier state, though, that the architect that was hired by the developer didn't take into account the, the excavation or the bedrock that needed to go into this, and therefore it was on the architect, the architect's drawings, his estimations were incorrect?
It was, I would more characterize it that that was unknown. It was in, back in 2015, when they did the first estimates of the costs of construction. It was in 2016 when they did the borings to determine the level of the bedrock.
They engineered it and designed it to stay generally above the bedrock. So, I mean, the fact, they're not into 12 feet of bedrock, and that's driving up the cost.
No.
Can you remind me the terms?
They're not excavating bedrock.
Very minimal amount of bedrock. They designed it accordingly to stay on top of the bedrock. So the bedrock's really not a driving cost factor.
Lucy?
Can you remind me about the terms of financing? When do we start paying on the bonds, and when, what's amortization?
We have not even issued the bonds.
All right.
And so until...
When do you think we will?
When construction begins, I believe that we would issue bonds at that time in anticipation that the first payback of, the first reimbursement of costs to the developer would be approximately 90 days following.
And what would be the amortization of it? So...
So the amortization would be over the remaining period left in the TIF.
All right, so we just take it to the end?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They would like to use one of their bonds. They would?
Mm-hmm.
But at that point, that's how much time would be left. Okay. And so... Right about a year. So it's just going to be about 20 years, you think? I mean, right, so you think two years, construction would start maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Or we'd start selling? No, we, well, we don't know.
There's a five-month period of time between where the construction drawings are today and where we could conceivably see community developments finishing their review and to the point where we're at, the issuance of a permit to begin construction. So whenever that five-month period of time happens dictates when construction begins.
So if the city, you're asking if the city wants to go forward. Has the developer, I'm sorry, I'm not following at all. What have they said they're going to put forward to make this happen?
They have not said what they're going to put forward yet either. Coming to you at a point where the developer wants to know if it is worth it for them to propose design changes to the project as it stands right now. Because if the, if we're not able to, if we think that we would not like to see these type of changes to the project as it stands today, then we're really back to the drawing board for what project we would like to see there. And that's, so...
Dan?
That's, that's my question. This sounds less like pressing the pause button and more like pressing the reset button.
Not necessarily. If you like those design changes, I mean, like, if you find them acceptable.
I understand. I recognize that the city and staffer, staff and the developer are willing to work together, but part of me says that it is a non-starter to, to remove a retail on Wilson Street. It makes zero sense to do that. I'm thinking, walking downtown Chicago, and I've got this, you know, six-story building. I'm not walking into a condo on the first floor from the sidewalk. So that's a non-starter with me. We made a value judgment as a council that we wanted as much parking as we could get into this building. We now have a decision to make. Do we want to go eight stories on this building to make it financially possible? Do we want to go 14 stories to make it financially possible? Do we want to lose 100 parking spaces to make this financially possible? I believe there's an answer, and I know that the developer and staff can, can work this out. But then, I also want to take one step back. If I'm literally pressing the reset button, would it behoove us to consider additional developers in this situation? Or do we believe we can resolve this if we can figure out what our variables are in terms of parking spaces and how high we want this building to go? I realize that's complex, but that's what we're dealing with here today.
Yeah.
It is.
So I agree. The, eliminating retail is a non-starter. When they're going to recommend change in the building facade, they're not going to make it look nicer for less money.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a given, that it's, this was designed in a way that, hey, this is going to look nice, and now, oh, well, let's change the parking garage. So now we're going to have a big concrete wall, would be my guess, is what they want to put on River Street. And that's just not going to be acceptable. Everything you have in here adds up to 6 million. Where's the other 2 million? Because they said they're 6 to 8 million dollars off. So what happens when we say, "Oh, sure, yeah, we'll work with you," and then, "Oh, we need another 2 million"? I mean, one after the other, after the other. I mean, we've, we've been through this with, with other things on this property, and I just, I can't see that happening, that this is the end. I don't think it's the end. I think this is the beginning. So, yeah, I agree. Reset. I, it doesn't make me feel comfortable.
I think when we've started value engineering out to save money, they're going to take brick out of the facade, that's a non-starter. I mean, it becomes a maintenance nightmare, and people tend not to pay the maintenance, and all of a sudden, you start having failures in, in facades and things. So I'm, I've done a lot of value engineering in my career, and I just, I am, I'm somewhat opposed to it. You know, it's a difficult thing. And I understand that there's costs involved. I still don't understand where we have such a gulf in their budget and, and the proposed cost today. And my other question is, who's doing the construction? Are they subbing out, like the GC? Are they hiring a GC because they're a GC themselves? As a developer, I thought, maybe I'm mistaken. So I thought they were going to oversee the project themselves.
And they haven't...
Chris?
Chris can answer, is there?
I don't think they ruled out themselves building it. Right now, they've gone to two different contractors to get estimates. They can, they have the capacity to build the whole project.
Right.
They had originally thought that they would act as, as the developer, and in that scenario, they hire a contractor to build the building. That's a typical, they're really two different roles. But they could be the contractor as the developer as well. They also thought about, well, maybe we hire out the garage and we build the sticks, you know, the residential and the commercial. So they haven't ruled anything out. I did want to mention one thing, because that is a huge delta between what they estimated two years ago, going on three years, than where we are now. And there's, it's partly a function of the cost of materials, and, you know, the cost of labor has gone up because there's more demand for construction projects now than there were back in 2015. So, but they should have realized that. But they did use, you know, projects that were built in 2013, 2014 as representatives. But what's key is, it is what it is. And they used about a 22.5, I think it was, an estimate, maybe it was up to 25 per space, in estimating the cost back in 2015. And you might be able to build an above-ground garage for something near that now. But we, the way it's turned out, and our own Carl Walker consultant agreed, you're not going to build a subterranean garage for anything less than about, well, they're something in the 35,000 per space range, they believe to be realistic. So, yeah, you know, we can sit here, and we certainly can, and I think Dave Petzel's a big boy, he can take it. They screwed up in their estimates. Maybe partly was a function of the time when they got the estimates, but they've known all along, even from the beginning, that part of the garage was going to be underground. So I think it's a mixture of, you know, the they went around looking, typical cost of a garage is 22.5, 25, maybe 27 per space, and now we're financed closer to 35. So their numbers now are probably pretty realistic according to our, our, and that's assuming the bulk of the costs are associated with the garage only. And we don't know that. You know, we need to get more specific in a pro forma and estimates. But that's where we're at. And my last comment on it is, there, I think what the developer's asking us to do is, see if the city would buy into any of these composition changes, you know? Obviously, the, the tenor tonight is, look, part of the deal was extending retail on Wilson Street. Not having retail changes the project, it changes what we promised to the community, it changed what the plant commission thought was, and what the planning department thought was a good idea. So that's not gonna happen. Okay, what about the other element? Taking the second floor, the upper level of the garage, and along its face on State and wrapping around River, put apartments in there. Well, that does, what that does is increases the increment, right? That's for openers. It also increases their rent, which allows them closer to their pro forma, but what it will invariably do is reduce some parking. So, and also add to parking demand. So that's an issue. Any composition change may change the value proposition for the project. If there isn't a composition change, then they have to call the question, will the city contribute more money in the bond? And then we'd look for them to match it. First, we need to get a more accurate pro forma that tells us exactly what their return on investment will be based on the new, the new project, or the new construction costs, actually. And if the city says, you know, that's not gonna happen, then, then we're looking at alternative, you know, maybe we need to go back to the drawing board and, and maybe find another developer. This developer's not ready to walk on this, but they will not build it if they don't make some reasonable return on their investment. And I don't think we want to support a project that won't pay off the increment, you know, whether it's through SSA or, you know, it's a general obligation, but we have to, that has to be paid back. So.
Well, this, this, this project is somewhat of a negotiated project.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And a lot of times I, I, I find with negotiated projects as opposed to hard-bid projects, they get more than two bids. So they might just get a more accurate pro forma if they go get another three or four bids from general contractors.
And frankly, they, they, the bids they've got now are real rough estimates. They have not put together construction document, bidding documents, because that expense is extremely more than, or significantly more than what they've put in to date. What they did was they put together, they've seen, they did provide new plans that are more detailed, but still not construction level. And so what we're told is, anyone that's gonna throw mon, throw a bid or an estimate at that is gonna give themselves 10 or 15% fluff because they're not sure until they get the actual construction docs what this is gonna actually cost to build. So we, we may have a high number, that's 6 to 8 million delta, you know, that, that could be high, certainly, but even if it's high by 25%, that's still a huge nut to, to make up. And I guess our response would be, you know, hey, developer, don't waste time and, and money drawing plans that change the composition of the building that results in either loss of retail or loss of parking because the council, and again, you'd have to go through the process all over again, there's no question about that. And that opens the door to, you know, here you got a problem. So.
Marty?
Yeah. September 12th, sign of the apocalypse, Mike and Dan and I are all in agreement on things Who approves the enterprise zone? Who does that go through? Is that the state?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing.
The enterprise zone is a government entity unto itself, and it makes agreements with the developer and just has to be approved by the state.
Same thing that Dan and Mike said about the value. We took those into account when we were making our decisions on these things. And that goes to number three, kicking more money in. Why? Because we were assured that in order for this to pay itself, that was my entire votes the entire way, was this thing pays for itself. The minute it doesn't, and we start having to kick more money in, or figure ways to find change in the couch, we're not in Vegas, I don't chase bad hands. So.
I would point out that you do still have the SSA, and you've got the developer's guarantee in the early years where even the SSA might fall short of covering that bond debt, but perhaps you're referring to other financial elements.
Right. Well, I think that goes to Mark's, it's six is what we've got. Then where's the other two coming from? And then what if they get additional in there? And then it's, oh, no, it's 10, and this and that. We made the decisions based on, they said, this is why we are justifying it to be this high. And we made the decision at that point. And that was a hard decision because it was all about, we increased the parking, so we knew that it was going to cost that. And we made the decisions on, this is why it's a cap, this is why we got into the RDA, this is why we have, trying to explain to the public, these are why we have off-ramps. And if we have an off-ramp where one or both parties need to use it, then at some point you need to get off the highway.
Are we still compliant with all the terms of the RDA?
Yes.
And, and when does, when does it need to be amended so that we're still compliant? I mean.
Kevin, when would you say?
Well, we, we were supposed to deliver the property to them within a certain timeframe. They, they have asked us to hold off on doing the rest of the demo of the foundations in the garage and doing the environmental because they were seeing some red flags.
So did we alter?
Use the mic, Lucy.
Did we alter the RDA?
We have not altered the RDA, but we met with them, we talked through all the issues, and we have an agreement in an email that they are not, they don't want us to deliver the property to them because that means now they have to do what they're obligated to do. So they've basically said, don't. And that's where we're at. So we are going to need to bring this to a head. And, you know, I am, I, I've kind of, I, I haven't had the opportunity, but it's also maybe a good thing that I haven't to kind of do the amendments that we talked about because there's still some question there, and we don't know whether we're going forward. But we're kind of in this, they, they don't want us to deliver the property to them because they don't want to step up to the plate at that point. They would be obligated to step up and do, right? So.
To start paying, what exactly happens when we deliver it? I mean, they can't just, they have to start construction. I don't remember. They have, okay.
Yes, that locks them into moving forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead. Good question. And I, I'm gonna go back to this architect and, and, you know, these, the plans are reported. Does the architect carry E and O insurance?
It wasn't that.
We, we don't know that aspect of it. There's no.
I didn't know if the RDA would force that.
That, we just, we really don't have any idea. We don't, we don't know exactly where the, the low estimate came from, who, we have no idea.
We didn't know what the error was until we did the borings anyways.
There, there really, there really wasn't an error with the limestone. They, they, they went out there and they did the borings, and they liked what they saw. But to be sure, they wanted to do additional. And that's when we told them, go ahead and dig up the parking lot, dig other holes. They actually dug holes rather than doing borings, because borings only tell you what you see in that three-inch hole. So they spent a day out there digging everything up, and they saw what they saw, they shot their elevations, and they designed the building around that. So they're not incurring any additional cost, in my opinion, because of where the elevation of the bedrock is. In fact, I can remember everybody being very happy because it worked out where the bedrock wasn't gonna be a hindrance, hindrance to the project.
That's true.
So I don't think there was any additional cost because of the bedrock. As you know, I, I asked Laura to bring this to the committee tonight because I had a few of you talking to me about what's going on, and, and, you know, we were hearing it from the community, and I myself, I, I just felt like this needed to come to a head. I don't, and I haven't felt comfortable with what's been going on for quite some time. We've heard for quite some time that it looks like it could be over budget and there could be an issue. I understand construction probably as well as anybody else does, and I understand there's hiccups in the road all the time, and there's, and there's delays all the time. But I also understand that you do want, and the developer wants the project to be profitable. If it's not profitable, why would anybody want to do it? If it's running on a very thin line, we don't want to say you have to do it anyway because our RDA, our RDA says you have to do it, even if it does pay back the SSA and, and the bond and everything else. Because then they're, they're running on such a thin line that now, next thing you know, they're not gonna maintain the property the way anybody else would if they're making money. So I just see this thing as, I hate to say it, but I, I really feel as though, I think for whatever reason, it's, it's coming in at a higher cost or a higher number than what the developer thinks he can make money at. And he's wanting us to consider all these changes. I can't see, as other people have said, that we, I can't see it, plant commission passing it, I can't see, I can't see us supporting it. We put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into this. That doesn't mean you can't reconsider something, but I think we're talking about some very drastic changes here in order to get that kind of money out of it. I think if, if the developer thought there could be some value engineering and some things that could be done to get it down there, we'd be seeing some, or staff at least, would be seeing some actual designs, something that he could present to us that he could say, look, we really want to proceed with this project, and we think if we do this, not if we think we could do this, if we, we know because we put time into it, if we do this, we can bring it in for this amount of money. But it's gonna take this from the council, it's gonna take this from us, and it's gonna take an enterprise zone, but we can do it. And I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing, we want you to explore this, we want you to think about this, we want to know if you would consider this. I'm not hearing, I'm ready to move forward because I know I can make this a viable project if we do this. So to go back to the reset button, unless staff goes back to Mr. Patzel, or the developer, I should say, and say, it doesn't sound like the council's willing to make any substantial changes, and Mr. Patzel comes back and says, all right, then let me have 30 days to work on this because I want to make this happen, then I think we hit the reset button.
Of the 14 of us, I think you and Mike probably could answer this question the fairest, and it sucks that we have to do this in open session in front of anyone who wishes that we did this in closed session, but I know we can't. Do you think in your professional judgment that this is a construction project that we should be pursuing? Or should we be looking at ways to wind this down? Or do we really need to let staff and the developer work on that? Is, is my question unfair? Or?
I'm not sure I understand your question myself. What do you mean wind it down? Make a less, a lesser project?
Nope.
Kill it.
Kill the project.
Kill it. I can't answer for Mike, but I think I just answered that question by saying what I said.
What, what I heard you say was that we, we need to look for another developer.
I, I, I think we should give the developer the answer that he's possibly looking for of whether or not we're willing to make these changes, drastic changes. And I'm hearing that we're probably not. We could do a nod of the head to give him that answer, and give him 30 days to come back with, all right, then I am willing to withdraw from the RDA, or I can make this work. I can make this work, and this is how I can make it work.
It breaks my heart, but I agree.
I, I, it breaks, I, you know, we all want to see it happen. This was a very big project for many, two years.
But if we do a reset.
I want to express that Dave Patzel really does want to build this project, but to your point, if it's not going to be a profitable endeavor, that it just, then it doesn't make sense for any of us to do. But I also don't want to lose sight of the reasons why you said yes to the project initially, which were the, you know, creation of, in the future, a million dollars of new property tax increment, 186 residential units filled with people with economic buying power to drive development in our downtown area and a downtown parking asset that we so desperately need.
I've always supported this strongly. And, and we went through a, a bloodletting, you know, to get to the position we're at right now. And, and, and I agree with Dave. They've, the developer needs to come and say, this is what we need to do, and I'm committed. And we haven't heard that. And if he doesn't commit, we're in perfect position. I mean, it's, it's not like we can't do this again with another developer. We're in a perfect position without having a bloodletting. And, and I believe there'll be other people knocking at the door to come to Batavia and build a similar structure.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you feel that way, Chris?
One thing to keep in mind is that we're in a contract, so we don't have the unilateral ability to pull the plug on this.
Right.
The ball really is in the developer's court right now. So to a certain extent, you know, we kind of have to let them do their analysis, and, you know, they're, they're, they've posted question, they've given us questions, will you do this, will you do that? We, we should respond. And, but the ball really is in their court, whether to move forward or pull the plug, and I think we have to let them kind of guide us on that.
I think that's what Dave's saying, though.
Yeah.
And I think we should be very clear.
I don't think anyone wants to pull the plug on this.
Right.
To what their questions are, I think we should be very clear to what the questions are and what our answers are from the 14 of us. So I think that that has to be really clear and very well stated, because if we're not, my fear is that also hurts us within the RDA.
Well, I, we're on that. All of us? Take an agreement?
I'd like to answer Lucy's question, though. Couple of things come to mind. One is, you know, the, the project site now is certainly more shovel-ready than it was. We've learned a lot about the, the property. We've purchased the property that we didn't have when we started this program, so we can deliver the entire redevelopment parcel. The easements are gone. The construction or the demolition's been completed. We're fairly certain there's no environmental issues there. So, yeah, it's more development-ready. That said, I'm not so sure we can find someone that'll build the same project. I think, you know, developers are used to getting beat up a little bit, so I don't want anyone here to think that they were abused during this project. I've seen projects where there's been real abuse, where someone's approved a project and then changed their mind on it, and that's a problem, because that gets out, word gets out about that. So as long as, if it had to be an amicable, hey, look, this won't work for you. Now, what they might do, the developer, and he hinted he'd like us to consider it, you know, there were a couple other plans that were presented early on. I think it was scenario A, B, and C. And the, the council was, I think, unanimous, and, no, we want the full monte. We don't want, I think A was some townhomes and B were some, you know, rectangular-type, condo-type projects like you saw Shodine build actually in Geneva and out at Mill Creek. I mean, they could build those type of buildings all day long, and they know how they work. But we also have to consider that we're gonna lose a lot of parking. I mean, we had 129 spaces out there that are gone now, or they're not gone, because the deck's still there, but if we give all the property up for the type of project that was alternative B or A, where's the public parking? You know, and I don't think anyone's gonna buy into, well, we got 120 spaces across the street at Larson Becker, because that's short-sighted. So I guess to answer your question, I think when we, when we inform him that you can't redesign the building by changing the composition, as we described earlier, then I think, you know, Chairman Brown is right. We then call the question, if, tell us what you absolutely, you've done all you can, what is it you absolutely need in order to build this project? In, in other words, create new pro forma, so we know what a reasonable return on his investment is, knowing the new construction costs. There will be a slight change in the revenue stream because he believes that the assessed value will be greater because the rental rates will be greater than originally thought. That's probably, there's some truth to that. But I don't know it's gonna make up that difference. So they may say, look, we do believe that if the city puts in X, and maybe we sit there and go, well, you'll need to put some more cash equity into it also, you know, as opposed to borrowing money, then maybe there's some movement. But we're still never getting to the point where, and I can't recommend, and I don't think any staff would, where we would set, issue bond amount, whatever that amount is, if we didn't think that the increment could pay it back safely. You know, the SSA's always been a backstop, just in case the increment doesn't. There were estimates, actually, if the revenue str- There were estimates, actually, if the revenue stream was X, a high end, we might be able to pay the bond back, the 14 million, like in 16 years. And then you'll recall, the rest of it, we're going to share with the developer dollar per dollar, capping it at 16 million. So I think we use deliberately conservative estimates in revenue. So I think there is some movement there to the north. But obviously, the big difference is, you issue, greater issue of the bond, you're going to increase the total amount due because of the, you know, the interest rate over the course of 20 years substantially. So we're trying to keep that number, obviously where the agreement is, at 14 million. But, you know, they're not going to make any changes to the value proposition, you know, where you put in more residential, or you do something else with the parking deck facade, and we're just categorically saying that we're not interested, don't waste the time, then it's going to be tough, and the developer may walk. But to answer your question one more time, yes, I think there could be greater interest because the property's more development-ready. So that'll help.
Just, again, just for clarity's sake, Chris, too, Michael O'Brien is not opposed to Shodin. They're a good company. Dave Patzel has always been a stand-up guy, and I want it to go through. I honestly do. And so let's see what we can do to make this happen, okay?
I think one thing I'd like to say before I sit down is, you know, I would like, I imagine that Dave Patzel would like to address the council on this question, if you're interested in listening. We decided not to invite him tonight because this is really internal discussions, but if you're interested, you know, maybe you can hear the developer's side of it, if you don't, if you feel you want to hear it. I mean, we've come this far to the dance, you know?
I think we need more answers than discussion.
Absolutely.
He's got some, give him some time to have some proposals and answers. Coming up here and explaining why isn't really going to help us.
No, I think what Dave was asking for was, you know, some more concrete ideas, how to, what is necessary, what will make this project successful.
Yeah, I think you hit it right on the head. I mean, we can't sit here and talk about what-ifs forever. We have to have something substantial that we can really consider. We already have. Now we're going back to the drawing board, but we don't want to start with nothing on the drawing board if we don't have to. And I don't think we have to. We've got a developer that apparently is willing to move forward.
Exactly.
But we need to have something to really sink our teeth into.
Yes.
Why don't we, if everybody's agreeable to it, why don't we ask the developer to come in then? I know we've got quite a bit coming up, but I'm just, I'm thinking giving him 30 days. Chris, do you think that would be sufficient time to put together what he's thinking he needs to do to make this happen?
Well, yes and no. I think my fear is that he may say, well, it's going to be, you know, we can't sharpen the wrenches to this.
I'm sorry?
I think, the fear I have is that, on one hand, they may react, well, if they're not interested in any changes to the building plan, we don't see how this can work to make up the difference. They may say that, and then there's an amicable parting of ways. But on the other hand, I don't want them to spend architectural time drawing up, you know, pretty little pictures about the new composition with new residential versus parking if it's a non-starter, you know?
Then I guess it's up to the committee, because if we were to say, okay, we're not willing, what Chris just said, is if we say we're not willing to make any changes to the development, then his feeling is the developer's going to say, pardon me, but I excuse myself. So that means then if we go out for an RFQ and an RFP from another developer, we're going to be starting back over at the blank drawing board again anyway with a whole new proposal. So would we prefer to see what this developer that we've been working with for two years has got to say, something concrete, before we go over their point?
I would. I'd also say I'd be, I'd be open to the open-air windows in the garages. That'd be something.
That's something, that's something more than you.
Something, I mean, if he can, if he cuts his costs like he had spoken to, I mean, like he can, perhaps, and he was saying he was thinking maybe we can split some of that cost, we're still going to regroup whatever we put in bonded-wise. Is that a true statement?
Yes.
Yes. The one question of, and Kevin mentioned it, you know, it's, there's an agreement. And if we just categorically say we're not interested anymore, we got a problem. Because he could very well say, okay, here's my bill for all the work I've had to date, and that's money lost, you know? But, you know, I think there's room for more discussion. I mean.
I do, too.
There's potential other issues, maybe there's other places where we can park it. You know, I learned today that the property at 206 East Wilson, the Marathon Gas Station, is going to go on the market for sale. You know, maybe there's other opportunities that are there, and I just don't, I said this at the staff meeting this week, I don't, again, we've come so far with this developer, they've got a vested interest in the project going forward also. And maybe, who knows what these drawings might look like? You know, there was discussion of, hey, I know you're not going to like this word, height, but there was some discussion, if they can move it out of the ground a little bit, there's some savings there, you know? That's less excavation. Even though it's not with respect to the bedrock, it's still dirt that's got to be moved out. So there's ways of doing it, you know? I think it's probably as high as anybody wants to see it, but who knows what can be done.
So I'm looking at the calendar here, and about 30 days from now would be a Tuesday the 10th of October. Do we think we ought to try to schedule Dave to come in then and try to get, I think you know what we're looking for?
Yes.
Does that work? Okay.
Okay.
Also, I think by then they'll know if they're going to get the enterprise zone designation.
Good.
So that'll give them, at least that's solved.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else on that? Project status?
It is getting pretty late tonight, but I would be happy to share with you some of the things that are going on right now. Of course, on Monday, Historic Preservation Commission met about the Campana project and approved it. So that will now be coming before you on September 19th. Is there anything that you wanted to discuss about the hearing?
Yeah, I mean, we have, the public hearings been completed in front of the Plan Commission and then the HPC, so we'll be putting together all the information for you to consider as part of the next steps in the Campana review. We have to talk a little bit about public comment and how we want to handle that. We have a special counsel that's representing the city in this regard, so we have some things that we'll have to talk about with that as well, so we'll provide that information to you as part of the meeting as well.
And then with regard to some projects that are going on in Public Works, Streets is working to finalize the sewer repairs that are in support of the 2017 roadway resurfacing contract. And also, just to let you know, our downtown streets maintenance worker will be starting classes this fall to become a certified arborist. Currently, the city only has one certified arborist, and that's Scott Haynes. So we look forward to having someone else on staff with that expertise. That's really important and a great complement to help with, you know, what Lucy was talking about, the beautification of our city. Also, the electric work is continuing in Colonial Village. It is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. And water crews have made valve adjustments on Route 25, and that's in support of the IDOT reconstruction project that's happening there. And then also, the annual pavement crack sealing and patching contract, contracts have been begun throughout town. And if people want to see if their street is anticipated to be part of that project, you can go to the city's webpage, and right under those announcements on the homepage, there's a link to the project and a map to determine if your neighborhood is going to be part of that or not. With regard to artwork, I always like to report on what the status of our artwork is, our fourth sculpture on the bridge and storehenge at the corner of, yeah, and so.
Enough said.
Enough said. We're looking at about three weeks from now, so.
Is that it?
We continue to plug away. That's it, unless anyone has any questions for me.
I just want to, under other, to piggyback a little bit, on the 19th, when Campana comes to the committee, I am not going to.
Good job on that, Dave.
I'm sorry?
Good job on that. You won't be.
I'm not going to be in town, so Alderman Wolf is going to chair the meeting, and Alderman starts before us, Wolf.
I'm bringing a big hammer.
I got pretty good foresight if I plan that, a urine.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be here either.
That's right.
I'll be here.
Look out.
I have another other.
Okay.
Yes. One of the people, the very quiet people of the Fourth Ward contacted me via email today and said that it might be helpful if we had an ordinance in place that prohibited people from feeding animals outside, because they feel that, because so many people feed stray cats, et cetera, that they're getting a proliferation of skunks.
Yes.
And so they said that other cities have ordinances, other cities they've lived in have ordinances against feeding stray animals, and they were wondering if we would consider adding an ordinance in Batavia that's enforceable so that people would stop putting out food.
As a matter of fact, this is something that came to our attention a couple of weeks ago, and so we're studying it right now, and we'll have something to bring to you soon. Thank you.
I had a couple others.
Just wanted to bring it up, because it's so unusual that I get an email from anyone in the Fourth Ward that I thought I absolutely should bring this up tonight.
And just so you know, it's not just a Fourth Ward issue.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? We're getting too many conversations. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
They don't say it was Callahan, that's all.